Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're missing, oh, there we have, we have all of our commissioners down. Oh, it's okay. It is 10:01 on the 23rd of May. Good morning and welcome to the, I'm going to call the order, the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for May 23rd, 2017. At this time, I would ask, under Sheriff Schilling, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, under Sheriff. All right. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Marcia Burke Bigler, Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Von Hartung.
Here.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager John Slaughter.
Present.
Assistant District Attorney Paula Pirelli.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. Do you have a quorum, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. At this time, we'll go to public comment. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item is limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And new operation, I will call it speakers, and if I would, I'll call a couple in order and then have one queue up right behind them. First, we have Mrs. Tammy Holt Still, followed by Mr. Garth Elliott.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tammy Holt Still for the record, and not going anywhere at any time soon. Today, I am starting with, I want to say thank you to Commissioner Hartung and Commissioner Herman for supporting TRFMA last Wednesday in the elevation of homes grant I brought to your attention on Tuesday. I know that the residents are already applying for the assistance, and we thank you. Last Wednesday, I escorted a representative from Team Rubicon around to see the mess out in the flooding area. Down the road, they are willing to assist residents with mucking out their homes after the water is away from them. I want to thank you in advance for placing the waiving of permits on the agenda for approval today. Lemon Drive, kind of exciting news, the water on that creek is now stopping at 7/11 and is not making it to the lake. Also, Military Road is still running between nine inches to one foot five inches, and there is still water above the sewer plant in that creek, so it's more than just the water from the sewer plant feeding Swan Lake. The homes on Shane Drive are still in danger. The homes on Pompeii are still underwater. The residents are still out of their homes, and there's no end insight for them. At this time, I would request that Washoe County look to extending for those residents additional assistance. It would be nice to be preemptive than retroactive. Evaporating is occurring slowly, but assisting the evaporation will be good with aspirators. There's a two-fold of that. If you did the aspirators, you would also be assisting with mosquitoes, so it's something to look into. And then, there's a video auto on the North Valley's Facebook page that is a good show of what the water is like at the current time. It was recorded yesterday and put on the page yesterday. It might be something to look at. By placing 2 million gallons of water, of affluent water, in 1,800 acres of lake bed, and then you add in the water runoff from Golden Valley and Military Road, it doesn't add up. That's why we were flooded. I did the math. I would like Washoe, I would, I look forward to Washoe County and the city of Reno working together to create a master plan, and ask that it would be nice for the residents to be included in that situation, because we have ideas to bring to the table. And as far as 5G3, I will speak on that when it comes up. Thank you.
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Holt Still provided me with a handout which I distributed to the board, and will put on the record for this being.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Garth Elliott, good morning.
Good morning.
Followed by Mr. --
Commissioners and Chairperson, where do I start? I will try to be positive. 2005, I was on a cab, and I got this inspiration. Wouldn't it be nice to have an electronic sign in Sun Valley that told the residents what was going on at the, at the community center, at the senior center? Well, we got it, finally, 12 years. It took a while. Hopefully, the next one, and there will be a next one at the other end of the valley, won't take so long. So, if you get a chance, and you Commissioners were definitely involved in the process, you gave us the leg up that we needed at the end to circumvent a sign ordinance that was onerous, to say the least, that was problematic. But we got our sign, and we have it, it's in English now, but it will be bilingual, and it's telling the people in Sun Valley all the great things that's happening in Sun Valley. Last meeting, we had some proclamations that dealt with older people in Washoe County. Growing up, I never could imagine myself growing old. My grandpa died at 42, my dad died at 46, so I figured after 46, I was on borrowed time. Well, I made it past 46, and another 20 years after that. If I'd only known, I'd have taken better care of myself in the younger years. The point is that now I am a older American, an older Washoe County citizen, and you're making it tough on us. You really are. You've been parading in countless scores of new employees since the first of the year, which represent about $1 million apiece in fiscal involvement at the lifespan of their tenure with Washoe County and into old age. Please, get a hold of this. It's, I believe it's out of control. Being someone that employs people, and have for many, many years, I think you need to take a look at it and say, hey, do we need to go to the same staffing levels as we had pre-2008? No, we don't. So, try to break the government's cycle of, when somebody squeals, you give them another employee. We have to pay for it. The older citizens have to pay for it. And you're making it really tough. Washoe County is on older citizens. It's very tough. They're being hit with the 10%, 20% a year increase in their, in their rent, which you have no control over, but that's happening, plus the highest taxed, sales tax in the state of Nevada. So, be kind to them. They need more than a leg up, trust me. So, I'll, I'll keep it to two things, and have a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Next up, we have Ms. Donna Clontz, followed by Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Go, Donna, go.
Hey. Good morning, Mr. Chair and County Commissioners. I wanted to, I'm Donna Clontz. I'm a member of the Washoe County Senior Advisory Committee, and I wanted to thank, in particular, the commission for all your support for seniors during Older Americans' Month, the month of May. We're at the 23rd today, and so we've got eight more days to go. We've had over 70 activities planned, and there are two or three big ones that I wanted to talk about a little, a little bit today. We've got, we've got stuff of us going on in, all over the county. We have barrels all over the county. There's one out in, in your chambers in the lobby right now, as well as having some barrels at, at Social Services, the DA's office, the sheriff's office. I want to thank all the county employees for being involved in that one as well. In particular, I, I didn't realize it, but we had asked for a little bit of help for a program that we're trying to create, starting next fiscal year, that's the Healthy Walking Program for Seniors. And I wanted to thank, in particular, Commissioner Burke Bigler and Commissioner Lucy, both, for contributing $2,500 apiece from their funds to help us fund this, this program, which will allow seniors to be organized into small walking groups, who will be walking in our county parks, our city parks, and other places that are wonderful and beautiful in our outdoors here in Washoe County over the next year. It will allow us to work with the Vista Program through Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation to staff it with a Vista volunteer, who will get those groups organized and, and have our seniors out enjoying the, the outdoors here, but also getting, getting well and staying well as they, as they move around. The la, the, the couple of items I wanted to mention to folks watching and listening today are, today, we have Homa Woodrum, who is the elder rights attorney, out at the Sun Valley Senior Center, talking about senior, senior legal issues. She is, she's just terrific, and she answers questions and, and talks to seniors about opportunities that they have to solve some of their legal problems. Tomorrow, at the, at the library, at the North Valley's Library, we'll have Reno Housing Authority, Amy Jones, will be there to talk to seniors about affordable housing and housing options for especially low-income seniors in our community. And that is at 11 o'clock tomorrow at North Valley's Library. And then on Thursday, we're taking a road trip to the food bank with our, with an RTC bus to show folks both how to ride the bus, and how fun it is and great it is, but also to learn about the food bank, what it does, how it collects food, how it distributes food, and also volunteer activities. And this is a free, a free ride. RTC is providing the bus for free and taking us all out to the food bank. So, we'd like to fill that bus up, and we'd also like to stuff the bus at the end of the month with all the items that our seniors need for our County Washoe Senior Center. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Clontz, and thank you for all your work. Ms. Elise Weatherly, followed by Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
Hi, Elise Weatherly, from the United States of America. It used to be Based on the Truth, and I just wanted to say a thank you to Mr. Elliott. His statement about caring for seniors kind of brought tears to my eyes. And I wanted to let you guys know, I don't like coming here. I don't like being here. I don't like standing up here. I feel alone, but I feel like I'm supposed to do this. And I want to mention a song by a friend of mine named Chris Winslow. He's a friend, he's an IT guru, he's a musician, he's a believer in Christ. He wrote a song called "What Are You Willing to Sacrifice?", and what I'd like to do is write a song that says, "What are you willing to compromise?" Good decisions with good results are based on good information. Half-information, half-truths will only result in catastrophic endings. How do I know that? I've made many decisions on half-truths. I had originally planned on coming here and being vague, discussing court cases, you know, that are tried with half-information, and what they, what they do. Bringing up your accounting department, that it gets rewards and awards for doing a great job. Why? Because they don't compromise. But I wanted to let you know, I might be labeled, but my identity is this. I'm in Christ. I have a list of accomplishments that would probably drop your jaws. You'd say, wow, very impressive, but that's not who I am. I have put Marvin Neil to the test. Marvin Neil passed the test. He is an uncompromising man of, that keeps the truth, keeps his word, loves the truth, cares about people, and puts God first. I know Otto Kelly. When I found out that you guys are going to appoint Otto Kelly as the chaplain of Jan Evans Youth Center, the first thing I did was I took the biblical approach, and I tried to contact Otto Kelly, because he and I have had a past experience. He was in charge of Faith House Ministries, where I was the treasurer. We had some problems with that treasury. That, by the way, Faith House Ministries was designed from Center Street Mission after Mickey Lufkin left having a few issues. We kept that going. But what happened was, we had to have some discussions with Otto Kelly. And what I have done now is, since I know that Otto Kelly is with most of the Christian organization in this town, which will say, just get us back into that youth center, we can compromise the Word of God. What difference does it make? That would be Hillary Clinton question. What difference does it make? Guess what? Half-truth makes a whole difference. Ask your accounting department if you don't believe it. So, if it applies to accounting, why does it not apply to spiritual matters? If this county is putting themselves in charge of doling out information to the kids, why would you be willing to give them half-information? Just let them attend or not attend. Don't say, here's what you can say, here's what you can't say, here's what the Word says, let them listen to it. If they don't want to listen to it, just sit down and say, hey, we've got an escape solution. If you want to escape, we also have that in the plan. But you have to sit and listen to the whole truth, all the information. So, why don't you reconsider who you're hiring for this position? You wouldn't hire a half-truth person for accounting. I'm asking you to not hire a half-truth person to take the Word of God to the kids at Jan Evans Youth. I object. I would like to have a mediator between me, Egan Walker, John Slaughter, Marvin Neil, and Otto Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weatherly. Next, we have Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
Hi, good morning. My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. Yesterday, I had a doctor's appointment to see how I am doing. Well, he thought I was doing okay. But the other day, when I went to church, I did find out something. It's called the MRI tank. I was really surprised on how short the MRI tank is, and that tank is very short and very small. But he told me from the church that that's how they looked, and that's how they are, very short, because we are very short people. And, you know, I just stared at the MRI tank, and I was very amazed on how small it was, how short it is. And that's us. Can you imagine us being very, very small and short and tiny? Yes, we can, because this happened way back at that time where we were being devoured by people who do not belong in the United States at all. These people are very vicious people. They're very murderous people. They do not stop murdering people anywhere around the world. I heard from China, they thanked me for trying to help the United States, but why is it taking the United States people so long to destroy them? What is taking so long? I have no idea. Remember, they are not from the United States. They do not live here in the United States. They don't belong here in the United States. What is taking the United States people so long to destroy them? They're not even alive. They don't exist. But they have to exist in order to stay alive, to eat, and devour our bodies. Why don't you stop that? Stop these horrible murders from these people. Let's stop the cemetery from growing. Let's stop these people now. You don't have the heart anymore. You walk like a robot, because you have the bodies inside you now, the human bodies that deserve to stay alive. You don't think about that either, because I saw these people, I mean, not the people, but the sleeping bags were thrown in the river and ripped and torn, and what happened to the people? Nobody can tell us.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorse. Seeing we have no further speakers, we'll bring it back to the board at this time. And we were on to Agenda Item Four. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, item four is Commissioner and County Manager's announcements, reports, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything this morning?
Do you want to talk about agenda items?
Yeah, let's talk about agenda items right now, and kind of organize what our agenda's going to look like today, please. So, at this time, what we're going to do, we're going to make a little, a few adjustments to the agenda. We're going to take Items 26 and 27 this morning, directly following Agenda Item Six, which is our presentation. And then, we are going to, at this time, still hold the, well, we'll, we'll discuss that when we get to that, that agenda item. So, other than those changes, I don't think there's any other changes we need. Which other changes?
So, Mr. Chair, do you want to talk about 5G3?
Yes, yes. At this time, we're going to remove 5G3. We're going to take 5G3 off of the agenda. This is something that doesn't need to be discussed today. We are going to remove this item from the agenda.
Pull it from the agenda. Removed. Pulled.
We're going to pull it. And we are, we do have a 2:00 PM time certain for the public hearing, but it's not listed on here.
So, on 5G3, just to be clear, 5G3 is removed from today's agenda.
Correct. 5G3 is removed from today's agenda.
And the other item, I believe you're, you're referencing for the 2:00 PM is, is Item 23.
Item 23 is a 2:00 PM time certain.
Right. And I, and I, I think we can announce, I can announce now, we did receive a request from the applicant on that item withdrawing that item, withdrawing that appeal.
Correct. So, there will be, we will still hold the public hearing for that item and take public comment, but there will be no action taken on that item, because there's, Mr. Pirelli, I was under the assumption that we needed to open that public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if, if there are people who pursuant to the notices that were issued appear today and can only appear today and not another day, it would be well to invite them to make their comments for the record, but as the chair has announced, the item is, is withdrawn, and there'll be no action on it.
So, we will, at that time, we will address that as, as see fit, but there, that item has been pulled and is, at this time, removed from the agenda. So, we have 26 and 27 prior to, or following Item, Agenda Item Six, 5G3, and Item 23 have both been pulled from today's agenda. Any other changes that need to be made at this time, Ms. Madam Vice Chair?
No changes, I just added 5G.
Oh, you have a comment, okay. Mr. Manager, do you have anything further you'd like to add this morning?
I do have one item I wanted to, I was asked to, to mention, and that is related to an event tomorrow. As the community begins to begin, thinking about outdoor activities, warm weather activities, such as lighting grills, launching kayaks in the river, playing with their pets at the park, we have a number of officials coming together tomorrow. Truckee Meadows Regional, I'm sorry, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, our regional parks staff, animal services, the sheriff's office, holding a joint press conference tomorrow at 10:00 AM at Mayberry Park to talk about summer safety, particularly along the river, but also fire safety as well. So, I just, I was asked to make that announcement. I know that Raven will be making appearance at that event tomorrow. So, we are just asking the community to, to consider summer safety as, as we enter into these warmer days.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right. Do I have Commissioners signed in? I do. I have Vice Chair Burke Bigler signed in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one thing I'd like to ask, that we look at the EDON, the amount of money that we donate, or that we provide to EDON for the services that they are providing to this community with all the growth that's coming in. Yesterday, as we all know, a really top-notch company came in, and high-paying company, and, so the announcement was made yesterday, and this is an ongoing thing. So, because of that, I would like us to, in the next budget, not this budget cycle, since we're so far into this budget cycle, but in the next budget cycle, look into whether or not we should increase the amount of money we provide to EDON, and, on a going-forward basis, but not this, not this budget cycle, everybody. Next one. Okay?
Great. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just have a couple of items. One, where are we with dispatch, Mr. Manager? There was a call that was put in by a Sparks resident this weekend. Reno, of course, takes those calls. They routed it to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. It should have been routed to Sparks PD, because the address is in the jurisdiction of Sparks. And it, and, and there was a whole bunch of emails that went on. We just, we really need to fix dispatch, where we're taking our dispatch. We recognize whose jurisdiction, although I recognize that the sheriff has jurisdiction throughout the county regardless, but it's, it's usually more of an emergency situation as opposed to civil issues, which, this should have been routed to Sparks PD. It finally got resolved, but it, it really took quite a long time. The other thing that I have not seen on, on our dashboard, and maybe I just missed it, and this kind of goes along, it somewhat goes along with our Item 20, but not exactly the same, and that is a program for assistance for flood assurance for low-income residents throughout the county. Is there a program that we can create for identified low-income residents that do reside in a flood zone, where we can assist them with flood insurance? Because at the end of the day, it, it would be beneficial for the county to assist them with, with being insured. And then the final thing that I have is a community forum tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, Lazy Five Libra, not, it's at Lazy Five at the Sparks, Spanish Springs Library, in, in Sparks. I'm not sure which room they have assigned us to, but it'll, it'll probably be the side room where we normally hold our cabs. Love to see you guys, come on out. We'll have a discussion. I know everyone from the SO to RTC to NDOT will be there. So, I look forward to that conversation and, and trying to understand better what some of the issues are. We also do have another forum coming up in the middle, in the beginning of June, rather, for medical marijuana in Spanish Springs. And so, we're going to try to, it's not deflect those questions, but, but those questions would be better served during that meeting, because the applicant will be there, and, and that's really the appropriate time and place to, to have that conversation. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Herman.
The first item is regarding Item 5. It's, it's just a small item. It's about the, the minutes from 4:24, page 13, and there's no bears in Palomino Valley, so.
Commissioner Herman, can we do that during consent?
Sure, we could. I can save that one.
Okay, thank you.
I just thought I'd get it all done at once.
Yeah, no, that's, we'll do that during the, under the item.
Okay. All right. So, both of those are in there. I just wanted to talk about the poison, poisonous hemlock. I just, regarding horses, there was an article or a warning put out by, or an informational thing put out by the county, and I didn't think they covered the horses enough. And so, on, in any area where there was a lot of rain, which is all of our county this year, horses on what might have been a dry pasture at one time probably might have some of this poisonous hemlock growing this year. I've noticed a little bit of it on my place. And horses would eat it if that's all there was there. And so, you want to get yourself aware of what the leaf looks like, what the flower looks like, so you can get, pull it and have it out of your pasture. So, that was that thing. And then, let's see. Okay. The other one was on, all right. Okay, so, this will be another, another item, too, that I hope I'll be here for. All right. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did neglect two other items that I meant to ask about. At some point in the past, there was a question about people who are serving in elected offices, also serving on a cab. And I think we were supposed to address that, although when I reviewed the list of items that I had requested, I did not see it on there. I know that if you are, you can't serve on a cab if you're obviously elected to the commission, or a city council, or the legislature, but what if you're elected to a GID board? Can you sit on a cab? And I think that question needs to be brought back, so I would ask the manager if you, we would bring that back at some time to review. Also, I do have a community forum also in Incline Village, and it is on, this Thursday, the 25th. It's at 6:00 PM, and it is in the library, so if anybody wants to go up to the beautiful Incline Village and visit with us, please come. It's gorgeous place to be right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair. Next, I have Commissioner John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to, first of all, request for a future agenda item to use by next fiscal year's discretionary funding to do a donation of $9,000 to the Generator, which I had the great experience of touring. It's an art space for people out off of Glendale, Ice House Road area in Sparks, and is where the whale that we all received in our card from Burning Man this year for the, for our holiday card, that's the whale that's going to be put downtown. He's rebuilding that right there right now, the artist. And that $9,000 will help with lighting that whale, and that will last for a year. That installment goes in July 1st, and it will be downtown in Reno for a whole year. So I want to use that money towards the lighting. I have a Board of Health meeting on Thursday, May 25th, and it is broadcast, it starts at 1:00 PM. And then finally, as per usual for many years, I will be speaking and representing you at the Memorial Day services that Sierra Memorial Gardens puts on every year in the North Valleys. And I'm pleased to do that and to say thank you to those people who gave their lives for our country for this Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner John. I appreciate that. Thank you for your help and attendance. Commissioner Herman.
I had one more thing that I forgot to mention because I was trying to eliminate all the ones that pertain to something else, but I better let you know that I have to leave here at 1:15.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it's, that's your attending NICO Western Interstate Region, correct?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. All right. And then, so, that brings it to me, this time. This time, I have a few announcements. One, I would like to point out, first, the good things. We had the, Hot Oats Nights had its first version of Spring Fling this last weekend here in downtown Reno to kick off their event for the year, and it was well-attended, great, it was a great way to start off our summer season, even though it hasn't felt like summer quite lately, but we're getting off into that hopefully shortly. Also, RTC hosted the American Public Transit Association here a couple of weeks ago. We had, it was well-attended, it was one of the best-attended APTA conferences here in the community. About five, there was about 5,000 attendees, along with their families that came to the conference and was here for about five days. So it was a wonderful boost of economy for us, and it helped out tremendously, and we got to showcase our autonomous buses and different things here within the community. So that was a huge highlight for me, being as your representative to RTC and RSCBA as well, so it was kind of a joint task for me. Now on to my ask. I'd like to ask staff to start working on ordinances, reworking on ordinances for restricted gaming licenses, and follow suit with the City of Sparks and City of Reno. They have really, they recently amended theirs, and so I would like to direct staff to do, look at that. OSCO, I would now like to also direct staff to start looking at new federal representation for the county. We are in a new landscape federally, back in DC, and I feel that it's time that with the uncertainty that we see currently at the federal government in regards to where funding comes, and you know, obviously today, the President released his version of the budget to Congress, and there's some challenges, challenges that affect funding for our Health and Human Services, funding for resources, FEMA, different things of that nature. So as we move forward into the future, I'd like to make sure that we have a representative, and I would like to direct our managers to initiate that process and start working on that. Other than that, I have nothing else that I'd like to ask for at this time. Oh, well, I have all the sheriffs here. There is one other thing I'd like to ask. I would like to look at some increased speeding over on Andrew Lane and Rhodes Road. I know that, you know, the sheriff has been out there and has done some issues, but it seems like that is still a challenge to that Equestrian Center in the back of Steamboat Valley. And so we keep, I'm constantly getting concerns. I know that your representatives are out there, but I'd also look to our members of CSD if we can help with the Sheriff's Office, finding some sort of traffic deterrent or speeding deterrent for those locations. With that, I have nothing else. Did anything shake loose for anybody? No? Okay. Seeing none, we...
We'll move on here now onto...
The consent agenda, consent agenda. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, your consent agenda is represented in Item 5 on today's agenda. Those are Items 5A through 5J4, and however, as announced earlier, 5G3 has been removed.
Okay. Would any Commissioner like to, Commissioner Herman, would you like to, there's some discussion on the consent?
Yes, sir. So, back to bears. On the minutes for 4/24 on page 13, it says coyotes and bears, and what I thought I said was coyotes and dogs, because I don't want anybody thinking that we have bears out there.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, if I might, we'll listen to the tape, and if it's, if you said dogs, we'll put dogs there. If not, we'll put your correction from today's minutes in the record of today's meeting.
Okay. Just no bears.
Great.
Okay. In 5J2, I just was curious, had a question about that. Does Raven, does Reno pay for Raven? Because I noticed a high percentage of the calls are in Reno. Okay, so the next one, let's see, I think I had one more.
5I2.
Oh, maybe I read it wrong. I'm old. Okay, so, all right. And then I had a question about no flood insurance also, so that's a good idea.
Commissioner Herman, would you like to pull 5I2 for further discussion?
Um...
Or do you want to just answer the question right now?
Oh, if somebody can answer the question, it'd be great.
Mr. Chair, I'll try to pull from memory, my understanding, this item is specifically for fire response, and I don't believe Reno Fire pays for fire response. I think perhaps some of the activity you might be seeing is law enforcement activity, which is treated separately.
Okay. Very good. All right. I should have read it more carefully. All right. I think, I think that's good. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. So, at this time, Commissioner Hartung, do you have anything? No?
No, sir, just...
All right. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
I'd like to...
I didn't see you sign in.
Notice, oh, sorry, I didn't sign in. Sorry. I would like to...
Commissioner John.
...bring to the attention of the public, because the two Commissioners for Items 5G1 and 5G2 are far too humble to bring this out in public, but I am in charge of the donations, so I will go ahead and read this. So Item 5G1 is where Commissioner Burke Bigler, Vice Chairwoman, I mean Commissioner Von Hartung, is dispersing of his fiscal year funds at this meeting, and with that, he is giving a $4,000 grant to the Nevada Discovery Museum, $1,500 grant to Reed High School, $1,000 grant to Alice Taylor Elementary School, $1,000 grant to Bud Beasley Elementary School, $1,000 grant to Ed Van Gorder Elementary School, and $1,000 grant to Jesse Hall Elementary School, $1,000 grant to Miguel Sepulveda Elementary School, and $1,000 grant to Spanish Springs Elementary School. Thank you, Mr. Hartung. That's very much appreciated, I'm sure, by the recipients. And then 5G2, Vice Chairwoman Burke Bigler is recommending a $2,000 grant to the Lake Tahoe Bicycle Coalition, and they, too, I'm sure, are happy to have that $2,000, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner John. Thank you for pointing that out. I appreciate that. So, looking for a motion at this time?
I made it.
Motion by Commissioner Hartung?
Yes. Want me to do it again? It's lit up again.
All right. I got a motion by Commissioner Hartung, a second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. I have, do have public comment on this item, so at this time, we will call public comment. Miss Tammy Holt still?
For 5G3.
Five, come on down. You can come, oh, for 5G3?
It's been pulled.
So it's been pulled? All right. So you no longer want to make comment, I'm assuming?
No.
Okay. So we are on to Mr. Garth Elliott.
5G3 also.
5G3 as well. Okay.
But I will see you if it comes back.
All right. Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. I'm talking on 5B, approve role change requests. Well, for errors discovered on the 2016 and 217, secure tax role and authorize chair to execute the changes described in Exhibit A, and direct the Washoe County Treasurer to correct the error. Well, I just wanted to tell you, you know, stopping the evacuation, how much is that going to take to stop? Oh my God. We have the US military here, and they're wondering why we're under evacuation, and they're going to be charged because they're going to stop the whole in dismantling, or even destroyment. Who's going to be charged for all those taxes that the people had to put in because you have to stop it? Well, in Memphis, Tennessee, the caskets were all put in a house, and that is a place for a person to live. And you put the caskets inside a house? What's wrong with burying those people in the ground? Or what's wrong with putting those caskets in a house in the cemetery? Why do you have to put it, put those caskets in a house? Well, I'll tell you, you know, you're covering it up again. You're trying to tell us, you know, there's no money. And it says here, cumulative amount of decrease to all taxing entities. Oh my God. What is that? Is that to cover for lawsuits? Is that what this is all about? Because the Washoe County Treasurer has to correct the error? What error are you talking about? Well, I'll tell you what it is. It is to cover your lawsuits. You're going to dig it out of our bank account, you're going to dig it out of our payroll checks, you're going to steal it from us. You're going to steal our disability checks.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorse. Next, followed by Ms. Elise Weatherly.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Hartung for the schools and stuff that he supported. Just maybe as a suggestion for next year, if you guys would consider Sparks Middle School. My, a family member is over there right now, and I am amazingly impressed with how they are handling the kids over there. The Principal Ting, she's handling them as individuals. Mrs. Barker, they've actually taken a family member of mine and raised him up, but he's helping them with the budget. Yes, a 13-year-old is helping them with the budget. He's that smart, and they have to cut some costs, and so I was hoping that maybe you guys would consider supporting them because they support the kids. Principal Ting is her name, Mrs. Barker. These are amazing women. I just want to give them a high five. And also saw that they're starting to build something out of Highland Ranch area. We went out and investigated some drilling going on. I guess you guys are trying to build a middle school out in Highland Ranch? Yes. Go, go team, go. Thanks. Thanks, Juan.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Seeing no further public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Hartung, second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your vote up on the board, please. All right. All votes are affirmed. All right. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, our next item would be Item 6, which is an appearance by Representatives of the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority. President Merely Mora is here to do presentation on landing benefit, the Reno-Tahoe Airport and the benefits to our region.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
Commission Chair Lucy, Commissioners and County Manager Slaughter, thank you so much for this opportunity this morning to just give you a brief update on the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority. And with me this morning is Lisa Gianoli and Nat Caricelli, and they are both your appointees to the Board of Trustees. As many of you know, we do have a nine-member board, and you have two appointees, and I believe next month you will be looking at the reappointment of Mr. Caricelli also to another four-year term. Just a shout-out that he's done a phenomenal job for the airport authority. Just always like to remind people who we are. We are the owners and operators of both Reno-Tahoe International Airport and Reno-Stead Airport, eight-passenger airlines serving the airport, three cargo airlines. We're 24/7 operation, and again, nine-member board appointed by Reno Sparks, Washoe County, and the RSCVA. I always like to talk about the fact that we are financially self-sufficient, and we operate on rents and fees that are collected from airport tenants. We really pride ourselves in growing our non-airline revenue, and right now, that non-airline revenue is 65% of our operating revenues. And why this is important is that the more that we can bring in money that we don't depend on the airlines means that we can keep our rates and charges very low to the airlines at a very modest level. So when you park at the airport, when you buy something at the airport, when you buy food, that all goes into certainly the operation of the airport, and again, is considered non-airline revenue. We do not collect any local tax dollars for the operation of the airport. So in many ways, you can consider us really a small city. We do have our own police and fire, our own accounting, our own HR department, so we really operate as a small city out at the airport. We are an economic engine of this community. I don't think many people think of us that way, but we have 2,500 jobs at the airport. There's about 250 people that are employed with the airport authority, but when you combine all the different companies that operate out there, it's 2,500 jobs, and it brings in the airport $2 billion a year to the county. Every time a 737 lands, and the 737 is the aircraft that Southwest Airlines uses at the airport, so that represents 50% really of our landings, that means $100,000 coming into our community. We're going to be updating these numbers later this year, and I suspect that that $2 billion is going to certainly grow. Back in 2013, in June of 2013, our board adopted a strategic plan, and this is a five-year strategic plan, so we're going into the last year really of that strategic plan, and these priorities have really worked very well for us. Number one, we look at increasing, maintaining our air service and increasing our air service. The second thing that we look at is certainly the general aviation operations, optimizing GA operations, general aviation operations, at both Reno-Tahoe International and also at Reno-Stead Airport. And I will say that back a couple of years ago, it was no secret that we probably did not have a good relationship with our private pilots at Reno-Tahoe International, and we've worked very, very hard to turn that around. One of the things, too, I think that cargo development is very important to us, and with all of the economic diversification in our community, cargo is doing extremely well, grew 13% last year, so we're really, really focused on the future of cargo at the airport, at Reno-Tahoe International. And when we talk about economic development at our airports, it's really about getting the most out of our land, again, growing our non-airline revenue, certainly both at Reno-Tahoe International and certainly at Reno-Stead. At the end of the day, we want a positive experience for our customers, and as all of you probably can imagine, the recent incident that happened on Thursday night between two customers, we're just so upset that that happened at our airport, because having a positive experience at the airport is so important to us, and literally, there's been quite a few views, there's been millions of views probably of that video that took place, and I've got to tell you, those who saw the video, our police were not called probably 10 minutes or so into the incident, and when they were called, they responded in under two minutes. So we're going to be, we always do a lot of training with all of the people that work at the airport. If you see something, say something and call. I think we're looking at new ways to communicate also with our customers. We have courtesy phones, but maybe there are new ways that we need to communicate to people. Please... Please call when you see some incident happening at the airport. Don't wait for somebody else to do it. We're so proud that we've added 14 flights in the last 22 months, but Eva, I'm even prouder that it's really the community that has been there and helped with getting these flights into the, into the Reno Tahoe International Airport. And the way we really like to talk about that, why we're out talking about all these flights, it's one thing to bring in a flight, but you know, we need those flights supported so they stay in the community. Two and a half years ago, we got Valaris to finally come into this community, such an important flight with three flights a week to Guadalajara, really with over 25% of our population being Hispanic and many of them coming from the area around Guadalajara. That's a very, very important service for us. And after 15 years of talking and courting JetBlue, we finally got JetBlue two years ago to start that very, very important flight to JFK, New York City. And just about a year ago, they added another flight to Long Beach. So great additions. We've seen expansion by Alaska Airlines and we've seen expansion by Southwest Airlines. A number of years ago, Southwest pulled about six flights from our community, but what we're seeing now is that they're reinvesting in Reno Tahoe International Airport with a flight to Dallas Love Field. They're starting service to San Jose in June. Last June, they started three flights to Oakland that are doing extremely well. So it's been great to see Southwest Airlines rebuilding in our community and at our airport. And even in June, we get a new flight from United Airlines to Chicago, which this is a market that is very much needed from this local community. So again, 1,600 new seats in the last 22 months to our portfolio at Reno Tahoe International. We like to show our route map. Again, you know, it was so important to get that JFK service, but what we've been building up is really the service to the San Francisco Bay Area and so of course getting the Oakland and San Jose flights and not only Southwest and San Jose, but we also have got Alaska Airlines there. We've also really been building up the flights to the LA Basin with additions in Long Beach and certainly Orange County. So really filling in some of the holes that we had on this route map. So last year, we had an increase of 6.4% in our passengers, but if you look at this graph, you can really see that we're rebuilding. We lost about a third of our passenger traffic during the recession, so great growth, but we're rebuilding from where we were. So, but we're, we're certainly headed in the right direction. Cargo, it was a record-setting year for us in 2016, 13% increase in cargo and this was the best year on record for our cargo lift and Reno Tahoe International. And I think again, when you see what's happening in the community and the things that all of you are involved in, that's warehousing, e-commerce and distribution facilities in our community, we're really seeing that growth in cargo because of all of that economic diversification means cargo growth at Reno Tahoe International. Want to just share some programs that we're doing at the airport. We're in a master plan process and a keystone part of that master plan, a 16-month master plan process is really our community outreach. We're about a third the way through the master plan program. When all the changes that we saw with over 50,000 new jobs coming to the community, so many changes happening in our industry, it was really time for us to do another 20-year look ahead with a master plan and it will be our future roadmap for the future. The other thing that we're doing is a local advertising campaign, which is something that we have not done in a while, but when I talk about all the 14 new flights, what we found through a number of focus group sessions is that our local population didn't necessarily know about our new airlines and our new destinations. So everybody loves a freebie and a giveaway, so we're doing, we're doing, we have partnered with our airlines and every week over a couple of month timeframe, we're giving away a trip to a non-stop destination that's paired with also a hotel at that destination. And right now, we've had over 30,000 entries into that program. Had some happy people too, winning a trip. The other thing we like to talk about and we're spreading the word really in the community is there are airfare deals out there and so every week we send out a little, a one-sheeter information that has the airfare deals for, did you get it? Good. I think what we're trying to do is really prompt some impromptu travel, so. And then we're out there talking about Air Service One, some sessions out in the community to explain how we do air service. General aviation is important at our airport. $15 million have been invested in Atlantic Aviation on the east side of the airport and as to so aviation services, which services Falcon Jets, we expect to see them grow also. I'll speed this up. Reno Sted Airport, we're delighted that back in 2013, the state of Nevada was one of the six test sites for the unmanned aerial systems and Reno Sted Airport is one of the test sites within the state of Nevada. And actually, we've had NASA testing last week and this week. They will have a news conference with NASA on Thursday, so exciting things happening at Reno Sted. And we also have a master development agreement out there of 1,700 acres at Sted. I just wanted, it's always a good time to say thank you also for your representation on some of our other committees with the airport. We really appreciate having people that you appoint involved in the daily things at the airport. New concession opportunities, we're going to be having a public workshop on June 15th because we have about 3,500 square feet for new concessions and we really want to let the local community know of those opportunities. And we're going to have a new common use public lounge that will be coming probably early next year and this will be something that if you're probably partner, you have an Amex card in your wallet, you will be able to go in there, but we are looking at really partners with other local businesses to offer this opportunity for people. Just want to mention transportation network companies, we're growing the Uber and Lyft at the airport. I think it's not really, we still don't see them cutting in totally to the taxi trips are still certainly healthy at the airport. And again, at the end of the day, we want a positive experience for customers. TSA PreCheck is grown at our airport since we have signups actually in our lobby and over 40% of people that use the airport use PreCheck, which means they have a better experience. We have a kindness takes flight team and we always have, we have our therapy dogs out there on a regular basis because we have 25 teams. So thank you so much. Sorry that I ran over and would entertain certainly Chairman if there are any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mora. Thank you for the wonderful presentation. I think this is something that is, you know, airport, I'm a little bit biased because I think you do a wonderful job over there and I think that we've seen over the last few years, just the tremendous growth, not only in air service, but just the quality of customer service and the experience that many of our passengers to this area, yes, we will have, you know, without many passengers that pass through our airport, we will have some bumpy experiences, so to speak. But for the most part, you have done a wonderful job. You and your staff have really put, in my opinion, your heart, blood and soul into that airport and it shows. And I want to thank you and your staff and your, and particularly our Airport Authority, our board members that serve as representatives of Washoe County, but the entire board as a whole has really put forth a tremendous effort to bring Reno Tahoe back into the prime where it once was prior to our recession and you have done a phenomenal job. Just that Baltimore air leg would be phenomenal.
Top of our list, top of our list. Thank you for those kind words.
Baltimore air leg is going to be a great one. So at this time, I have a couple, I have Commissioner Hartung signed in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great presentation, Ms. Mora. It's, it's good to see the airport growing again. I know when I first moved here, we had many more flights than we do now and it's, and it's good to see that, that we're coming back. My questions revolve around some of the things that we have going on in Sted. I'm, I'm familiar with the master developer agreement that we have. Have we seen any growth there? Is there any takers yet? Have, has the, our partner out there, have they put in any infrastructure? Because I, I know that the listeners were being asked to put some infrastructure across the airport, which was going to be a great benefit to you guys, but is there any infrastructure being put in to accommodate that growth?
No, there is not any infrastructure yet. I mean, we're very much in the beginning stages of having the, the board just, you know, approve that development agreement with Dermody Properties. And, and I will say that the one reason that we think it's, it's great that we're having the drone testing at Reno Sted Airport is really to be in the forefront of, you know, hopefully those companies that test at Reno Sted Airport come, see what a great community we have and come and locate their companies here. So that's really our goal of showcasing, you know, really the community. And, you know, they're, the very beginnings of the integration of the drones with the manned aircraft, that testing is being done by NASA and it's the unmanned traffic management and that's what's happening at Reno Sted. And so companies, very prominent companies are coming out there. We think over the long run, they will be doing business in this community. So that, that's really our goal to help, help the local community.
Well, one of the things I, I hope you guys will look at is partnering with lifestyle homes. They're not ready to build. You guys could really use the infrastructure. It would speed things up for you, but there may be some impetus on, on their part. If you partnered with them and you guys split that infrastructure coming across the airport, which would benefit you and them, otherwise you may have to wait, you know, quite a number of years. They, they will eventually need to do that, but, but the timing might not be as appropriate and, and as opportune as if you move forward. And again, they, they may very well be very up for, for doing something like that. I'd like to see, of course, Sted grow for more commuter traffic, you know, small, small commuter planes can get in and out of there fairly quickly running across the hill. And I'd also like to see it grow for some cargo traffic so that, because there is a, there is a railroad spur very close by and that, and, and some of those things could be dealt with fairly easily because of the infrastructure that's already in place around that facility. And so those are, those are things that I see, I, I know it's a longer range plan, but I think Sted has, has a great future and the 1,700 acres could really be a premier business park that, that could give TRIC a run for its money.
And thank you for recognizing, I mean, we consider Reno Sted our jewel. I will, I will say that, you know, in the, the shorter term, we're really looking at the cargo development at Reno Tahoe International, the 108 acres set aside in the southwest quadrant. And so that's really one of the points of our master plan is to look at, you know, when do we pull the trigger really on that cargo development? But I think you're right, there's, there's a lot of opportunity for Sted going forward.
Well, because it's a blank slate.
Absolutely.
And, and there, as, as that area starts to grow, there could be a great need for, for cargo and you don't have to transport it all the way down and, and move it through the system, you know, in the, in the sort of middle of town. And so I, I just, I think it's a great, it's a great hub.
Thank you.
The opportunities are.
Endless.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner John.
I just want to say thank you so much for running such a great and beautiful airport. I think it's the best airport I've ever been in.
Thank you.
And it's perfect size with the perfect amount of amenities and thank you also to our appointees, Mr. Caricelli and Ms. Gianoli for taking time out of their busy schedule to attend with you and I will always support you and I certainly believe that every penny you make, you are worth it. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, and just to kind of close this out, Ms. Mora, you know, a couple of concerns that I did want to bring up that I, I had some pleasures to meet with some individuals from NACO that had come and, and visited our community through some planning events they've had here and originally in Lake Tahoe. And one of the concerns that came up is, you know, I know you're working on the concessions plan for the new, the new update, the airport, the airport update. When will that update be completed and finalized? Are you, you still, I know you're working on that currently.
Well, one of the initial updates is getting this lounge, but also we will be putting out the opportunity probably this summer for 3,500 new square feet of retail or food and beverage. So that, that may take at least a year to kind of, in terms of the, the process. So we are working on that. I mean, I think one of the things is that we get constant feedback from customers on certainly retail and food and beverage and constantly communicate and work with our concession companies to, you know, take that input and do something with it. So I think one of the reflections of that is certainly on the CCON course, a couple of months ago, we had Tap and Pour, a new outlet open that local craft beers and kind of healthier food. So I think that's something that we continuously work on.
Great, great. Yeah, that was one of the concerns that once they hit pass through security, there wasn't a whole lot. So I think that one, the addition of the lounge will be phenomenal for those individuals that may have delayed flights or canceled flights once they pass through security instead of going back out, having that ability to stay up there on top in the concourses and really either be able to relax and enjoy a quiet place, not at a gate, and then also have the access to either grab and go food as they're getting to their plane or a little bit more of a dining experience is just one topic that was brought up by some travelers. And then the other thing I wanted to bring forward is there has been, and you and I have had that discussion, I just want to put on the record, is the utilization of any vacant space outside of the 108 acres that we're going to try to utilize for more cargo, because I know that's a growing business for Reno Tahoe Airport, is the utilization of solar fields and how that can impact and how we can really turn the airport into as more self-sufficient in regards to taking some draw off. And I know it's been very, very successful at other airports across the country to utilize certain land that may not be functional for anything else off of the tarmac for self-sustainable, you know, those, those sorts of fields. And I think maybe Sted would be a great thing. And I think we're very fortunate, having two wonderful airports that can potentially have that capability. One question I did have in regards to Commissioner Hartung's discussion, can Sted, the runway at Sted, could that land large cargo planes or would there have to be improvements to Sted?
They're probably, you know, the runway probably would be capable, but you know, there's just a lot of other infrastructure, you know, that is at Reno Tahoe International. Just would mention aircraft, you know, firehouse, you know, that's there. So there's, there's a lot of other infrastructure that you would want to have out there to have cargo operations or commercial operations that does not exist. There is no active tower at Reno Sted Airport, so that, that's another thing. So I think, you know, that, that's a view down the road, but I'm going to think right now, and we've done some cargo studies and so I think, you know, right now what you're looking at is probably Reno Tahoe International being the expansion because you do not have that kind of infrastructure.
In its current state.
In its current state.
Understood, current state. But future capability, there is future capability and potential, there isn't anything hindering such as geographics or anything like that.
Just money.
Just money, okay. Just, that's always, that is always a hindrance, let me tell you.
Just money.
Okay. Well, great. Well, thank you so much, once again.
Thank you very much for the time this morning.
Really appreciate you coming and spending your time. Mr. Caricelli, Ms. Gianoli, appreciate your time as well this morning. Thank you for attending. And with that, we will move on. At this time, we have quite a few individuals here this morning signed in for, oh, okay, yeah, let's do block. We'll do block. Let's do block. Madam Vice Chair.
Okay. Mr. Chair, thank you. I would propose that we put in a block vote, number eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, 19, and 20.
All right. I have a motion to do in block, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, 19, and 20. I have a second by Commissioner, Commissioner John. Mr. Manager, would you like to read those, please?
Mr. Chair, I also, I believe I skipped over 15 and I believe we talked about putting that into a block vote also.
Yes, okay. So that's a.
So if we could add that to the motion?
Men the motion to reflect that eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, 17, 18, 19, and 20 are all in block. Second, they're agrees. All right, Mr. Manager.
Item 8 is recommendation to approve amendment number four to project funding agreement between state of Nevada acting by and through its division of state lands and to fund, and the fund to protect Lake Tahoe and Washoe County for the East Incline Village Phase One Water Quality Improvement Project. And two, accept grant funding in the amount of $380,000 for the project plus $19,000 for administrative costs for a total of $399,000 with matching funds of $380,000 funded through a USDA Forest Service grant. Effective upon execution of the agreement documents through December 31, 2017. And three, if accepted, authorize Director of Community Services to execute amendment number four. And four, direct comptroller's office to make necessary budget amendments. Item 9 is recommendation to, one, approve modification of grant or agreement, federal financial assistance award of domestic grant between Washoe County and the USDA Forest Service, Lake Tahoe Basin Management Unit for East Incline Village Phase One Water Quality Improvement Project. And two, accept grant funding of $380,000 with matching funds of $380,000 funded through Nevada Division of State Land. a Nevada Division of State Lands grant, effective upon execution of the agreement documents through September 30, 2018, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget adjustments. Item 10 is recommendation to award bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive responsible bidder for the 2017-2018 roadway and parking lot repairs for Washoe County. Project staff recommends Sierra Nevada construction in the amount of $3,155,007. Item 11 is for possible action, discussion to determine under NRS 244.1505 if the inhabitants of Washoe County would be substantially benefited by a gift of Washoe County general funds to cover the cost of county building permit fees, including any applicable county plan review fees for single-family homes affected by Swan Lake and the immediate vicinity. Flooding in Lemon Valley where verification is provided in writing by the insurance carrier that the cost of the permits for repairs is not covered by the applicable insurance policy. And if the substantial finding is made, to approve the gift of general funds for this purpose, this action applies to the owners as recorded, owner of record as of February 1, 2017. And there is a list of the parcel numbers that are affected by this. And three, authorize the appropriate staff to make necessary general fund budget adjustments. Item 12 is for possible action to approve the fiscal year 2017-18 payments of $215,420 paid in quarterly installments beginning July 1, 2017, as Washoe County share in annual funding for the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency pursuant to NRS 278.02647, and of $34,740 paid in quarterly installments beginning July 1, 2017, as Washoe County share in the 2017 regional plan update. Item 13 is possible action to approve on the recommendation of the Chair, the reappointment of Lee Lawrence to the Washoe County Board of Adjustment to represent Commission District Four to fill a term beginning on July 1, 2017, and ending on June 30, 2021, or until such time as Mr. Lawrence no longer serves on the Board of Adjustment or his successor is appointed, whichever occurs first. Item 15 is recommendation to approve the sole source exemption to purchase the Leica GeoSystems Scan Station offered by Precision Survey Supply, a 3D laser scanning system, P30, and applicable accessories at a cost of $189,805.50. Item 17, recommendation to approve professional service agreement for video broadcasting and production services to Sosu TV in the not-to-exceed annual amounts of $127,000 for fiscal year 18, $130,000 for fiscal year 19, and $132,000 for fiscal year 20, and optional services not to exceed $5,000 annually unless approved by the county manager. If approved, authorize the purchasing contracts manager to execute the agreement for professional services for the initial term of July 1, 2017 through July 30, 2018, with two one-year renewal options at the county's discretion. Item 18, discussion of possible action, direction to the county manager to utilize two more hours of staff time to review the potential for Washoe County's participation in the downtown navigator program requested by Commissioner Lucy. Item 19, discussion possible direction to county manager to utilize two more hours of staff time to initiate a review of the detention facility in partnership with the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, requested by Commissioner Jung. And item 20 is discussion possible direction to the county manager to utilize two or more hours of staff time to initiate research of a potential stormwater utility district in the North Valleys area of Washoe County, requested by Commissioner Hartung. Leave, I got all of them.
Yes, you did. Commissioner Herman.
Two items that I'd like to talk about, maybe discuss and...
Okay. Do you want to leave them in the block, or do you want to discuss them to some questions you have for the items? Or it's up to you. Which would you like to do?
Okay. Item 11, I just want to make sure that legally we have the correct language so that whether somebody had flood insurance or not, if they're red-tagged, that they're included in this process. That's all. I just want to make that clear.
Mr. Leporelli.
If you don't, though.
Mr. Solaro, can you? Thank you, Mr. Solaro.
Good afternoon. For the record, Dave Solaro, Director of Community Services Department. So the way this is written was based on the direction given to the board at the last meeting in April. So yes, regardless of whether they've got insurance or not, as long as they can provide a copy of a letter from their insurance agent saying that the insurance agent is not covering the cost of the permitting, they would be included. And what we've listed here are the, all the homes that are red and yellow-tagged in the area.
Thank you. That's what I just wanted to make that real certain.
Okay. What are the, as you said, the other item?
And the other one is 20. And I was just thinking, to save the taxpayer monies right off the bat, I think maybe we should wait until we get the inflow maps, flood maps, flood inflow maps, and wait till they're done and ready for us to figure out whether we really actually need a, you know, improvement district.
Okay, so is that just discussion, is what you wanted to add?
Just a suggestion for the board.
Okay. Well, at this time, we have a motion and a second to keep those in block. Would you like to remove that from block for discussion?
I guess we could remove that one and talk about it, yeah.
So you would like to remove that from block, okay.
Probably, if that's the way we need to do it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Commissioner Hartung.
On item 20, I think we should continue to move forward for the simple reason that the mapping is only one component. I don't know how far western regional water will get us on the mapping, and if we stop now and we don't have the discussion for the entire northern area. This is not just Lemon Valley. It's all about Stead. It's all about Cold Springs. It's about, it's about the utility as it needs to deal with the waters that do not flow from those closed basins. It's a very, very different scenario. And the mapping that, and I appreciate Commissioner Herman's position, but the mapping is going to look at the entire region, and I don't see any reason not to continue to have staff just look at that to see what utilities may be possible, what is possible, is anything possible?
Great. I agree with you, Commissioner Hartung. I think that's, I think we need to leave it in block, Commissioner Herman. I think this is just the first step to addressing what we have ultimate concerns up there. And this is not making any final decisions at this time about what we're going to be doing up there. It's just allowing staff to start initiation, initiate that research process to make sure we can find up some solutions. So this design, at this time, I'm going to leave it in block, and we'll go from there. So I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Burke Bigler, and a second from Commissioner Jung. I do have, I do have public comment signed in. Ms. Tammy Holt Still. Ms. Holt Still, on which topic will you be speaking about this evening, this afternoon?
Number 20, please.
20, okay. Go ahead.
I agree with Commissioner Herman. I understand where you guys are going, but I also understand where Hartung is going, and having a utilities commission so that you can increase the residents that are currently out there, additional assessment on taxes to fix what was developed prior to, I would say, the 1990s is not fair in any way, shape, or form, because these residents, whether it's in Cold Springs, Stead, or Lemon Valley, have already paid their taxes upfront to be protected for this situation. And to increase it because of the additional building that was done by the city of Reno or the allowance of, through NRS, for the city of Reno to do this because Washoe County thought in their wisdom it would be better to let the city of Reno take over, that is an issue that needs to be addressed. What needs to be addressed actually is taking that NRS away so that you, the board, and the Washoe County Planning Commission can take control back and get building under control. I know some of you don't agree with me on that, but it's time that it goes back to the county and the county do what's right, because obviously the city of Reno didn't do it right because they wouldn't have been building and not making the proper flood mitigations in their planning so that there wasn't so much water going into those closed basins. It's an issue that needs to be addressed. I'm more than happy to work with you guys on getting that fixed. Also, it needs to be an idea as far as growth goes that it's called feathered, that the people that are in the rural areas like we are that are agricultural, stay agricultural, and you don't build condensed housing right on top of us or put warehouses right on top of us when it's agricultural. So those are the things that need to be worked on, not trying to build a utility commission to assess additional taxes. And that's where I stand on that one.
Thank you, Ms. Holt Still. Next, I have Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. I'm talking on number 11, and I just wanted to let you know it is the water damages to their furniture, their floors, their rugs. Also, I just wanted to let you know, I saw this man, he had to take out all of his furniture out of his new place. He just moved in, and as you could see, can see this, it was all mildewed, his furniture, and by the new manager, he had to take it all out and put it in to the garbage bin. Oh, my God. He could not have it in his new home at all. And I just wanted to let you know, the mildew that was all over his furniture, it looked so bad, I couldn't even believe, you know, that the water damage to the furniture looked so bad. I couldn't even stare at it. I just wanted to let you know his insurance would never pick this up, and he could not afford to buy no furniture at all. And I cannot understand why you would allow this flood to go through his home and then try to take his furniture out and use it again. The manager would not allow this in his new place. So he took it all out, and it had to be called garbage. I also wanted to let you know the parcel numbers that you have here on this page, number 11. These are also poles and wires that you are expressing in this particular item, because remember that the poles and wires are still out there and they're still connected to my home, and it's also creating a great big problem, because I have no gas, because they have to steal it from my oven. I have no way to cool down my home because they are now using my air conditioning, and I can't use it until they are through with mine. Oh, my God. And I just wanted to tell you, you know, my heat does not get used either unless they are through with my heat, and then they return it through the wires again on the poles. And how much is, am I going to spend? I'm just going to spend the part that I use. I'm not going to pay for their part at all. They can just, I guess, throw it in the garbage.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorse. All right. Seeing no further public comment, bring it back to the board at this time. We have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please, hold on a second. We're going to get our vote here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I don't show Commissioner Herman's vote in the system.
There's something going on with her pad.
It won't.
It looks like we've got, now you have them all. Please affirm your votes on the board. Motion carries unanimously. All those, all right. Mr. Manager. Yeah, at this time, I think we have some individual, we have quite a few individuals here for item 24. So we're going to take item 24 out of order. We're going to open the public hearing and move to item 24. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, this is public hearing, and this is for possible action discussion to affirm or reverse the Planning Commission's denial of master plan amendment case number WMPA 17-0001, an application seeking to amend the text within Table C3, allowed uses, commercial use types in the Spanish Springs area plan to allow storage of operable vehicles, including RV storage in the neighborhood commercial regulatory zone, subject to the issuance of a Board of Adjustment. Approved special use permit, and if reversed, to send the matter back to the Planning Commission for report thereon pursuant to NRS 278.2204. The request potentially impacts all properties within a neighborhood commercial regulatory zone within the boundaries of the Spanish Springs planning area. The Mankey Family Trust is applicant and appellant.
All right. Mr. Mullins. Mr. Mullins, how are you this morning?
Good, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, members of the board.
Can we get a presentation, please?
I have a presentation. I'm available to answer questions.
Great.
And this hearing, as described, is for an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of the Spanish Springs area plan text amendment, MPA 17001. To provide you with a little bit of background on this request, the Spanish Springs area plan has its own table of uses that is separate from the county's general table of uses that's found in the Development Code, and an excerpt of that table of uses is shown on the screen. Currently, the storage of operable vehicles is not an allowed use in neighborhood commercial. That is represented by a dash line on the table. The applicant is seeking to amend the table specifically to allow for this type of use, the storage of operable vehicles in neighborhood commercial. That would represent a change from the dash line to an S2, which would represent that a special use permit by the Board of Adjustment would be required prior to allowing that type of use on a property. And as you're aware, requiring a special use permit first would only allow a project proposal to be placed on a specific property if it were first assessed for its appropriateness. It would go through a significant public hearing process, going to the Citizen Advisory Board, going to the Board of Adjustment, staff review, agency review, to take a look at what the potential impacts might be for that type of use on the property and around this surrounding area. This particular request affects neighborhood commercial zoning only in the Spanish Springs area. There are 148 acres of neighborhood commercial in Spanish Springs. All of that is located next to or very close to Pyramid Highway. You can see those three main areas of neighborhood commercial in Spanish Springs located on the map on the screen. The bottom portion is at the intersection of Pyramid Highway and La Pasada. Further north in the middle is at the intersection with Caide de la Plata, and then that northern portion is at Horizon View. So this particular request was heard by the Planning Commission at their meeting on April 4th. The Planning Commission did take public testimony during that, during that hearing, and there were a number of concerns that were voiced at that hearing, as well as at a previous neighborhood meeting that occurred a couple of months prior to that. Those general topics can be summarized in the areas shown on the screen, essentially concerns related to just commercial uses in general already being located next to some of the, those neighbors' properties, a desire to not have any type of storage nearby, whether or not it was RV storage or personal storage, which happens to already be allowed outright in neighborhood commercial. Concerns related to traffic, noise, lights, potential storm drainage issues, crime, potential blockage of views, a question as to whether or not there is a need for additional facilities of that sort in the area. Additionally, some were concerned about this particular type of amendment potentially affecting their ability to store RVs on existing residential property. There were a number of residents who were present from the Shadow Ridge subdivision, as well as from the residential lots that are near Caide de la Plata and Pyramid Highway, and they had concerns as well in terms of compatibility for this type of use adjacent to residential lots. The Planning Commission, after the public hearing closed, did make a motion and unanimously deny the request for the amendment. The appellant has appealed that request, seeking to overturn the Planning Commission denial of the amendment, and in summary, have essentially requested that appeal, saying that the decision was made in error and that the Planning Commission did not fully consider the findings as required by the Development Code. There are essentially two options for the county commission today. There are essentially two options for the County Commission today. First is to deny the appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's denial of the request. Alternatively, if the Board would choose to reverse the Planning Commission's denial, it would need to be sent back to the Planning Commission for a report before being heard by this Board again. With that, I'd like to conclude my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Is the appellant here? Can we have, sir, can we come up and, please?
I think we do have a presentation as well.
Okay, I'm sure they're loading it up for you. And could you state your name for the record, sir?
Yeah, Derek Kirkland with Wood Rogers. I'm representing the applicant, the Mankey Family Trust. We also have Mr. Bill Mankey Jr. in the audience as well, if we have any further questions for him as well.
Great, thank you.
So as Kelly mentioned, on behalf of the applicant, we're here to ask the County Commission to reverse the Planning Commission's decision to deny the text amendment. You know, we want to point out that, as Kelly mentioned, the NC is along arterial roads. And part of the, I think we've all seen mini storage uses in town, whether it's Washoe County, City of Reno, City of Sparks. Typically, you would see RV parking located within a personal storage facility. The applicant owns the piece that's basically on the southeast corner of Pyramid Highway, La Pasada. They're looking at doing a mini, a personal storage facility there, which is, which isn't allowed use. They could do that today with a building permit. Essentially, due to the definition that the county defines personal storage, it does not include RV storage. So that's why we're here with a text amendment to do that. And we understand that, you know, the definition of, of storage of operable vehicles is, it's a broad term, so that's where the special use permit comes in, is basically mitigation so that it can be looked at in a more appropriate way as projects come forward on any of these NC parcels. Again, personal storage is allowed use in the NC zones today. I mean, these are, these storage facilities, it's the walls, it's the landscaping, it's the, the buildings that can range up to 18 feet tall, which I'll get into the design guidelines for. It's, it's nothing out of, out of the normal to see the RVs located in these facilities. We did go to the neighborhood meeting that, which the applicant hosted. We heard a lot of comments, and a lot of those comments were, were project-specific related, which would get addressed with that special use permit process if an applicant decided to take that forward. And we would like to point out also that the, that staff did, did, staff was able to make the findings originally. And we believe that those findings can still be met, which is why we're here for the appeal. So the, the appeal, the text amendment, sorry, is the storage of operable vehicles, basically just changing, changing that in the table to S2 through the Board of Adjustments. We go back through a special use permit if that use were to be included in that personal storage facility. Some of the other uses, which I, I believe would probably be more, you know, addressing some of the, the neighbors' comments in terms of traffic lighting. I mean, you look at some of the uses that are included in neighborhood commercial, I would probably be a little more concerned about adjacent to residential, gasoline sales and service stations, all large lighting facilities, a lot of traffic generation, automobile repair, and then also eating and drinking establishments. You could have a full restaurant. I mean, those are all high-traffic generations, a lot more so than you would see with the storage of operable vehicles or a personal storage facility. I think we're all familiar with, at the corner of Vista and La Pasada, this is the Desert, Desert Highlands mini storage facility, just similar area. It's surrounded by some commercial uses to the north, some residential uses. And again, a personal storage facility, just looking at this, the personal storage facility would be the eight to 10-foot walls surrounding the property. It would be those, those large, you see those large rows of buildings. Those are all allowed in the NC zone in Spanish Springs area. All we're specifically talking about with storage of operable vehicles is coming through with a special use permit in the future and adding the RV parking to the facility. So it's, the storage is in allowed use in NC. We're just looking to add the RVs there. And there's already some design guidelines within the Spanish Springs area, area plan that specifically address personal storage within the NC zones. Those guidelines also already discuss the inclusion of RV awnings as if it was intended for that use to be in there, which is consistent with what we see in the region. Some of the design criteria I'd like to point out, as you can see in the upper picture, you can see that the, the architectural in that, those design guidelines, which is allowable today with this, with the building permit, allows buildings up to 18 feet tall. So you can see the buildings probably more so over the walls than you would see RVs that are typically only nine feet tall. The bottom picture is the, the Desert Highlands storage facility where that, the, the lower on the previous slide, you can see the RV parking there to the, to the west, is basically what you would see from Vista. You can, you can hardly see them. There's landscaping requirements. Basically, I chose this facility because when you look at this facility and you compare the design criteria that's already identified for personal storage, this is, this is a perfect example. We'd have to have wider landscaping along Pyramid Highway, almost up to 30 feet, trails, lighting, there's specific lighting requirements spelled out in, in those design criteria that would, requires us to do low lighting. And so the other thing we'd like to point out too, is that staff, as part of their original recommend, recommendation for approval of this, was updating that, those design criteria to specifically address, instead of briefly mentioning RV awnings, to specifically address storage of operable vehicles. And again, we're only looking to do this with a special use permit, not, not, we're not talking about a project today. That's something that would come forward in, in ensuring that, that that project can meet all of that criteria, and that there is proper screening for those RVs similar to the personal storage buildings. To address findings three and five that, that the Planning Commission also said they couldn't meet, basically, you know, in response to the changing conditions and desired growth patterns, when we look at what Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency just put out, you know, there's gonna, there's, there will be growth in our region. And when you look at the red, kind of the red dots, and we're all familiar with it, is where the primary growth is, you look at Spanish Springs, North Valleys, these are places where you're gonna see a lot of growth. And that regional plan doesn't say to build, build larger lots, it says to build smaller lots. So if we start building smaller lots in our state and our region, it continues to promote recreation, and we see more and more RV dealers popping up, you know, we need proper storage places for the, these RVs. And I think, as the applicant can contest to, in some of their, their facilities that they already have in operation, they're, they're filling up RV spaces left and right. People desire this type of storage. And it's not just RVs, it's boats, it's UTVs, these are things that, that people enjoy having. And as, as people are buying 4,000, 6,000 square foot lots, they don't, they don't have the opportunity to store those. I can contest, I'm one of those. I, I have a 6,000 square foot lot, and my RV is not stored at my house. So in closing, this is a, you know, there is, this is not, this isn't anything new. The top picture is basically a facility in Washoe County, in the South Valleys, in the neighborhood commercial zone. And what's interesting about this is in the NC zone for the South Valleys area plan, you can do storage of operable vehicles outright. You have to have a special use permit for personal storage. So it's the exact opposite. But, I mean, you can see this facility, you have covered, you have uncovered, you have the personal storage buildings. It's really, this text amendment is really a minimal impact to what's already allowed in the NC zone. Below is City of Reno, that's over by the Summit Mall. So again, you have a lot of commercial uses, and there's a multifamily facility going in just to the south of that. You see both, to the north of that facility, it's all covered RV parking, you have some uncovered RV parking. And again, they refer to these as mini storage. You'd have to get a special use permit to do that in City of Reno. So this is basically, this is nothing new that we're asking for. It's, it's really just a minor, minor cleanup, in our opinion, to, to do what's already allowed in a lot of these areas through City of Reno, City of Sparks, and in Washoe County. And with that, I'll, I'll be available to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is actually a question for staff. Ms. Mullins, Ms. Mullins? So, so I'm, I'm understanding you to say that storage facilities are already allowed in this area?
Personal storage is in allowed use in neighborhood commercial in Spanish Springs, yes.
So you could build a big storage unit anywhere in this place? The only difference is you can't store RVs?
RVs or other operable vehicles, correct.
So do homeowners who have RVs store their RVs on their properties out there?
I wouldn't want to speak for all of the residents out there, but I understand just from there being a number of large lots, larger lots in the area, that there are some that do. There are other storage facilities in Spanish Springs where, and the ones that Derek had spoken of, other options for folks to store those.
So, so, so I'm, I'm having a really difficult time understanding why this is a problem in this particular area. I've driven down this highway, frankly, and I'm gonna tell you, it's ugly. It seems to me this would be, I'm sorry, it's ugly. This would be an improvement from a visual perspective. I, I just, for the life of me, I don't get why storage of travel vehicles is a problem. I, I really can't. I just, I'm totally appalled at this, and I think the findings of the Planning Commission are completely inaccurate. And I believe we should find to overthrow this.
Thank you, Commissioner Burke Bigler. Commissioner Herman?
You know, I, I try and look at these things from every angle, try to be fair. Every morning when I come in on Pyramid Highway, on my right-hand side, there's a facility just not quite as, as well-planned as the one that we're being presented with. And, and I drive by it, and I see everything in there, the whole, the whole shebang. And I agree with Commissioner Burke Bigler that it seems like we're kind of picking on one person, just from looking at it. Just doesn't seem quite, quite kosher. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I drive this way every day myself. But here's, here's where the difference is, and I'm familiar with the, the facility that you're talking about. It is in an industrial and commercial. And then what we did many years ago is, and, and some of those existing lots are still commercial. The Albertsons, as, well, it's not Albertsons anymore, the Save Mart, but it was, it was Albertsons. When it was approved, it was, it's commercial. The lot across the street where you have Eagles Landing, those are also, you know, originally designated as, as commercial lots. And we added, at some point in the, in the, after that, we added neighborhood commercial, and we thought about the kinds of uses that you might want to see on those, on those lots. The, the difficult part for me is, and this is where I'm gonna have to get some, an opinion from legal. The request that they're making, the lot that they're asking for, is appropriate. I think it's, I think it's a perfect use on that particular lot, because it, there is a lot of stuff that, that is consistent around it. The hard part is, is allowing future applicants who would be farther to the north on Pyramid Highway to have that, that same ability. And so, Mr. Leparelli, if we grant a special use permit, if we say, okay, well, you can do this through a special use permit, we add that ability into the language in our area plan, and then we grant this applicant that ability, say, okay, this is an appropriate place, all the, you know, all the stars line up here. The next guy that comes in and says, I want to do exactly the same, and we go, well, the stars aren't quite aligned the same way, and we deny them. Their option is a judicial review, and I know you cannot speak to what the courts will decide. I wish you could. I wish you had that ability and that crystal ball was clear enough. But typically, you know, once it, if we deny it for whatever reason, then it goes to the, you know, the next review, because this, this would not trigger a master plan amendment. It would, the, the next review would essentially be a judicial review. Am I correct in that? There, there are options?
I'll, I'll try to answer the question, and if I, if I haven't heard it correctly, you can correct me. A person wishing to challenge the denial of a special use permit would exhaust their appeals at the county level and then go to court. And, and the job they would have in court is to demonstrate that the county misused its discretion in the granting or the denial of a special use permit. That's a harder thing to do if you're an appellant than other kinds of legal challenges, because you're really attacking the use of discretion. And courts give deference to county-level decision-makers in the use of their discretion. In order to overturn a decision involving the use of discretion, you have to show that there was no substantial evidence to support the decision, that it was basically arbitrary, capricious, or it was made for no reason at all. So the issuance or the denial of a special use permit is a place where counties are usually given a lot of rein by courts, because counties, and cities as well, are local governments closer to the decision, closer to the people, and, and are equipped to make those kinds of decisions better than judges who, who are removed a few steps from, from that process. As I understand this application, though, it's a text amendment to the master plan to add RV storage to the table of uses, so that a person could operate RV storage businesses with a special use permit. Am I right about that, Ms. Mullins? She's nodding her head. So, so this application to challenging the Planning Commission's denial, if it's overturned by the Board of County Commissioners, would not automatically result in the issuance of a special use permit for, for the appellant. They would have to go back through the process to get a special use permit, and that's the stage of the process where things like screening, lighting, hours of operation, noise, impacts on the community, fencing, all those kinds of issues can be debated and decided. This decision is whether the use anywhere in the neighborhood commercial areas of, of Spanish Springs, covered by that, by that master plan, should permit RV storage with a special use permit.
Correct. Okay. So, Ms. Mullins, one question for you, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, the, the way that I read this was operable vehicles. So I've got an 18-wheeler end dump. Is that considered an operable vehicle?
I'm gonna defer this over to Planning Manager Bob Webb.
For the record, Bob Webb, Planning Manager. The answer is, the hauler is, but not the trailer. We define operable vehicles as a vehicle, and a vehicle by state law is defined as it has to be self-conveyance.
Okay, so, so, stop right there. So what you're saying is, is if, if somebody has a fifth wheel, he can't store it there, it can only be a Winnebago or a Bernabego?
Through the chair to Commissioner Hartung. The answer is, he could, only because that could be considered ancillary storage. But again, the term operable vehicle storage refers to the primary hauler. However, when you talk about a boat, for instance, or a trailer, they're actually not covered in code. So those are allowed as ancillary storage to the storage facility itself, as long as the ancillary storage is operable. So what happens in a storage of operable vehicles is, you do get the haulers, and you also get the trailer components, because they're a set piece, they have to go together.
Right.
So in your case, yes, the operable vehicles will refer to the front piece, the hauler, and the ancillary piece that makes up the piece of equipment would be the entire trailer assembly, okay? And then that would be allowed in operable vehicle storage.
Right.
It's simply because we don't- It's simply because we don't define trailer as a term inside the code, it's an oversight.
How about my D-9 CAT?
As long as it's operable, and the D-9 CAT is actually a vehicle, yes.
It's not ridiculous, Commissioner Young, it's not ridiculous.
Okay, hold on, come on.
As long as the vehicle's operable, and it's a vehicle, then yes. Because in the code, we separate inoperable from operable, and we're not talking inoperable here.
Right. Right, okay. So, so this changes with the special use permit any kinds of operable vehicles?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Based, through the chair to Commissioner Hartung, again, based on the design standards that are already included in the master plan, that if the board overturns this, and the master plan goes through, then as a part of the special use permit review process, they would have to adhere to the design guidelines
Right.
that the applicant had already pointed out, such as the fencing, the lighting, and the, and the whole range of activities designed to provide some measure of screening for those activities.
Okay, okay. I just, I want to make sure that we're clear because the, you know, this is, there's, there's a pit right across the street from some of these neighborhood commercial units, and there may be the desire to store certain kinds of heavy pieces of equipment at some point in the future. So, that's, that's, I just, I want to make sure that, that all of those things are being discussed, and those are all the questions I have, and what I'd like to hear from is, is
Through the chair, if I might, to Commissioner Hartung. One other point that's important, based on code compliance, is we do not allow commercial vehicles on a residential property. Where a neighborhood gets into issues, and we've actually had this discussion at the board before, for instance, is a backhoe, and we would not allow a backhoe on a residential property. So, therefore, if we, as code compliance, roll out, we have to give that property owner options, and the more options that we can provide to that property owner for proper storage of that commercial equipment is a benefit to the residential homeowner.
So, so am I hearing you correctly? If I have a backhoe, I can't store it on my acre?
Through the chair to Commissioner Hartung, correct. Commercial equipment, and a backhoe is defined as commercial equipment, is not allowed for storage on a residential lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. You know, and I have a question for staff, really quick, Ms. Mullins, if you may. So currently, in the South Valley's Plan, South Valley's Plan, outside of this, we can allow, personal storage is under a special use permit, correct, as was defined by the appellant?
For that specific use in that area plan, I would need to go back and check the code. I don't know off the top of my head. I know that the, the applicant did reference that.
Okay. So, you don't, you can't confirm that today? Okay? And then, the discussion, so, right now, it is not even a special use. This would not be considered an allowable, it would immediately not go to an allowable use, it would just go to a special use permit, correct?
Correct.
And through a special use permit, those defined operations of how that business conducted business, what they could and couldn't allow said commercial vehicles, said, you know, construction equipment, could be defined not to be an allowable use at said property through a special use permit process, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I continue to have a problem with this, and I think that I would like to
A motion that we affirm, but we're getting
Yeah, hold on, hold on. So, at this time, thank you, no, since we have no further questions from the commissioners, I'm going to open the public comment period at this time. So, at this time, I have Mr. Harry Reiners, followed by Ms. Diana Christensen. Good morning, Mr. Reiners.
Chairman and Commissioners, his name is Harry Reiners, 320 Hyacinth. I would back up to this project. I tend to agree with Mr. Hartung here and disagree with Ms. Burke Bigler because we don't wish to make this area any uglier. There are certain institutions along the, the way there that do not, excuse me, adhere to some of the rules and regulations.
Mr. Reiners, could you just please continue just to address the board as, as a whole, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyway, I'd like to just voice my opinion in, in opposition to the master plan amendment, trying to keep the lighting issues, noise issues, under control for this neighborhood. The, this is a neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reiners. Follow, I have Ms. Diana Christensen, followed by Mr. Don Christensen.
I'm Diana Christensen. I reside at 11825 Paradise View Drive, which is part of the 15 acres that's down just beyond Calle de la Plata, that is zoned this way as neighborhood commercial. You know, I, you're talking about parking RV vehicles right in front of my house, and you're putting it behind an eight-foot fence, but that doesn't stop it from being there. I can't imagine anybody who thinks it's beautiful to drive down McCarran Drive and see the old driving range now as a brick wall with RVs behind it being better than our desert. I realize those who live in the mountains don't like the desert, but I think the desert is gorgeous and beautiful. I also disagree with having this storage facility with RV parking on the corner of La Posada and Pyramid due to the fact that the traffic is bad, and as he, this gentleman so nicely showed us, then this community is going to blossom and grow. We don't need a storage facility on that 10 acres. We need dental, we need doctors, we need retail, commercial, we need facilities that are going to bolster the neighborhood, not give those outside our neighborhood someplace to park their stuff on the way out to the lake. And I would be very interested to hear, too, how many RV vehicles this gentleman is going to put, and how many storage units. Last word I heard was that across the street from my property, yes, that's where Store Quest is, is 165 bucks just to park your RV, and that's sure a heck of a lot cheaper than putting in actual buildings to put your stuff inside. So, I would like to see that type of thing stay in the commercial area. There's lots of, comes a mile and a half down the road, last I looked across the road, there's a lot of commercial storage in there. We, as a community, would like to see our Hollywood and Vine as something more usable for the public than storing stuff. So, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Don Christensen.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner and Chair and Commissioners. Don Christensen, I live at 11825 Paradise View in Spanish Springs, and I echo what my wife just said, and my only point, really, to be here today is to just ask you to support your own planning commission, who unanimously voted against this amendment change, and they had their very good reasons, and they stated that, and it's a matter of record. I don't see that anything has really changed dramatically by the applicant to dissuade this body to go against the recommendation, unanimous recommendation of their own planning commission. I'm troubled a little, in the time that we've watched this application processed, that the applicant has done nothing at all to mitigate the really deplorable condition of his rather expensive property. There's been a fence that was knocked down, car took it out, weed abatement is like nonexistent. Like, if I did that around my property and ignored the weeds, I'm sure I'd be sanctioned by the, by the county. I think that their application is, that their thesis is disingenuous. They, they are a money-making operation, which is fine, but not at the expense of the aesthetics of the area and the possible consequences farther north near my home. My, my home actually backs on to this seven acres that would be similarly zoned if you were to overturn the planning commission recommendation and, and allow this, not zoning change, but the amendment to the commercial residential zoning. So, again, I, I just ask you wholeheartedly to back your own planning commission and, and not approve this for overturning their, I think they're very thoughtful recommendation, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Next, we have Mr. Jonathan Steiber. Steiber, Steiber?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Steiber, and I live at 11765 Horizon Ridge, and that's in the Shadow Ridge area, Horizon View, excuse me. Anyway, here's the situation. I think this is disingenuous in the sense that the same arguments were proposed before the planning commission. The real issue here is they want to put, they want to change the amendment to read operable vehicles. Now, the little area that we have out by Shadow Ridge is not really where they want to put the operable vehicle, because they want to put it down by La Posada and Pyramid, and I understand that. But the planning commission listened to the same arguments that were presented here today. They, in their wisdom, agreed that this is not the proper use. It doesn't want to change just this one little area, it wants to change every area that's listed there. That's the problem. It's not that, that they want to just do one small section, it's that the whole section. We would say that the planning commission, in their wisdom, listened to the arguments. One of the arguments was that, well, it wasn't, it wasn't allowed originally, but they inferred that it could be added later. I would suggest that, no, it was omitted in the original code because they specifically didn't want it there. They specifically said, we don't want operable vehicles. It wasn't that it inferred they can add it later. I agree with one of the Commissioners here in that it doesn't necessarily say you're just going to park an RV there. You could put a cat out there, you could put a semi out there. It doesn't say you can't run it out there. They could put their semi out there, and we know a semi runs for quite a, quite a while if somebody's just parking it. They, they put their semi out there and they run it, because they don't want to shut it off, start it back up again. This whole area is residential now, it's going to keep becoming more residential. The idea, I agree, it's a difference if you drive down the road and you just kind of look at the area, or you live in the area. That whole area is commercial. One of the reasons that I moved out here, we, we purchased property out here in 2000, okay, my wife and I, with the idea of moving to Reno and Sparks area. We did that two years ago. One of the reasons we did that is because of quality of life. I don't see how putting operable vehicles in that area adds to the quality of life for the people that are living in this area. So, I would suggest that the planning commission didn't make an error when they, they approved, or said, we're not going to approve this, that they were absolutely correct, and that you should allow it to remain as it is, no operable vehicles.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Gordon Astrom.
I live at Horizon View up there, and that way up north in Pyramid area. Let me tell you something about our neighborhood in Spanish Springs. It's pretty new. All these houses in my subdivision has gone up in the last several years. Across the road, they're putting more houses up, brand-new ones, and there's probably going to be several hundred there, too. I believe the commission has just approved another 600, just a little farther up. All brand-new homes, the most we can get by, because I've worked all my life to buy something like this. And to look at what we have, and when I bought it, they said it was neighborhood commercial. And I asked, what's that? Says, well, it's doctor's office, maybe a convenience store, something like this, something to help the neighborhood out. So, that's what I plan to see there, and then when I see a, a change, I will protest it, of course. There's a lot of gray hairs here because this is during the week and 10 o'clock, so the people that are working aren't here. If they were allowed to be here, there probably would be more people here to object to the change in your verbiage on your plan. I think it's actually the, the wrong use for a good area. There's nothing wrong with the land, it's beautiful, and it's going to grow houses. But where we have a commercial use in a neighborhood commercial area, I think is inappropriate. Across the street, we have a commercial development, has warehouses, and it actually has a facility for storage, and storage of a RVs, and they have a wall around it, as appropriate. And when I'm coming out of my little subdivision there on my bike, I look over and I see the roofs of all these things. It's a, you know, when he says it's hardly visible, it's like saying you're hardly pregnant. Yeah, it's okay. I object to changing the master plan, and I would prefer if you do not. Thank you.
Next, I have Mr. Dan Herman.
Good afternoon, for the record, Dan Herman, 11275 Campo Rico. Spanish Springs, I'm right in the center of this, one, let's see, two lots to the north. There's two separate neighborhood commercial on the old Donovan, I don't know if Donovan still own that property. There's two neighborhood commercials there to the south of me, one lot away, neighborhood commercial there, developer just put up a big sign, they're going to put storage units in there. This is on the corner of Calle de la Plata and Pyramid Highway. So, there's another one for you. We're going to allow that in there? So, we got this guy, wants to do it, and this isn't talking about individual, individual project right now. The problem is, and to answer the Commissioners' questions, here's the problem with this, is you're letting the developers override the community planning that we've done for 20 years out there. I was involved in all this. Commissioner Hartung was out there as a chair of the planning, since the advisory board. Lot of effort went into this. It's not an accident that that allowed-use chart doesn't have operable vehicles and motorhomes in it. We didn't want it when we did the chart. This is going to be a, a nice neighborhood, we went through those allowed uses charts. It wasn't an accident that that was placed in that column out there. We did the planning as we should, that's what planning is for. I've been involved in planning out there. So, again, why do we have planning? You can go back to Trevor Lloyd, Trevor Lloyd knows all that. The problem is, is you're changing everybody's neighborhood commercial zoning on this, you're not just changing the one lot that the Mankey families want, I don't care. If you want to change that to industrial property, that would be allowed out there. Change his zoning to industrial property, let him put a special use permit or a zoning change for industrial where it's allowed in Spanish Springs. That's the real way to do this. Now, if there's a problem with industrial property out there, right across the street, there's tons of it. Hoco's got tons of industrial property. Mankey family can go out there right now and buy a property, wouldn't have to be doing any of this. It's allowed under industrial, it's not allowed under neighborhood commercial for a very good reason. Developers should not be driving the process. Why is a developer changing our, our process out there? You're letting one developer change it for everybody, neighborhood commercial. That is not right. It's not what I expect from my planning commission, nor the county commissioners. Has a huge impact to our way of life. And RVs aren't just nine-foot tall, they go from 10 to 14-foot tall, so the, the planner for the developer is, is absolutely wrong. Again, don't change everybody's property zoning for one developer, that's not how we do things.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Next, I have Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. What is the problem? What is the mistake? What is the error here? What is the question? Well, I don't see it. Well, I don't see it. I think that you already have the operable vehicle. You already have it on the storage. You already have it there on the property. You already have it there sitting there. You already include everything that this operable vehicle is. It's already being used. It's already been, you know, invited into the property. It has not been actually taken off the property at all. It's already parked. It's already in place. It's already accepted for the payment. It's already been there. So what's the problem? I agree with Ms. Burke Bigler that there's nothing, you know, should be there.
Ms. Brandhorse, please address the board as a whole, please.
Yes, okay. But you see, I don't see no problem either. There is no problem. It's already been there. It's already been parked. There's already the storage there, too. It's already been stored, so I don't see the problem either. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorse. See, no further public comment. I'll bring it back to the board at this time. Further discussion or a motion at this time. Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I'm looking at this document of what's allowed, it would appear that there's some much worse things that are allowed, like construction sales and service. I would assume that would be construction vehicles that would go along with that. A heliport, airport or a heliport, I would imagine stopping an air helicopter many times a day would be a problem for these people also. My concern is, there comes a point when you need to update the area plans, the management plans, the regional plans, to meet the growth of the community as we see it. And this is a use that's allowed in other parts of our county. It already happens in the South Valleys, it happens in other parts of our county. It seems inappropriate to me to simply refuse to update this management plan because it's Spanish Springs. And that, I'm sorry, I hate to say that, but that is the sense I get, is that no matter what wants to be done in Spanish Springs, the neighbors in Spanish Springs are always opposed to it. And so I think we need to make a motion, and I would propose to make a motion, to reverse the planning commission's decision to deny the master plan amendment case WMPA 17-0001, and send the matter back to the planning commission for a report. And this action is based on the board's review of the written material and oral testimony at this public hearing, and the board's interpretation of the relevant findings. I believe, do I need to list the findings for the motion? Okay, so I believe this is, in fact, consistent with the master plan, because this amendment isn't changing anything that isn't done throughout this entire county. And the exception to what we do is this one particular area of the county. This is something that we do throughout the entire county. It is, in fact, a compatible land use, because you already can have a storage system there. This is compatible storage. It's just another form of storage, so it is a compatible land use. We need to respond to changing conditions, and that's what's happening throughout this community. We are, in fact, changing. This community is growing in ways that we may not all be happy with, but it is growing. And we need to look at these areas and make sure that we are able to respond to the changing conditions in our community. And the desired pattern of growth, it's already something that's allowed. What is the difference between putting, I mean, any kind of vehicle into a storage unit when you can always already put all kinds of things into the storage unit? You're going to put a fifth wheel in there, because it's not a vehicle, but you can still park it there now, because it will be part of a storage unit. So it's illogical to me to leave this the way it is, and that's my motion.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
I want to...
Second? Who made the second?
I would like to.
Did you do?
But I can't.
Okay, Commissioner Herman made the second. I have a motion and a second.
We can put it in the system.
You need to refresh it.
Yeah, it says that it's already been, has it not been seconded, Madam Clerk?
There's no... Okay, try that. Does it work? Okay.
Discussion, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Further discussion. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you. I can't support this motion for the simple reason, I agree, I think that there's a better way than changing the plan, to just go back, much like we've talked about in other areas. And I have no issue with this particular parcel. It's the other parcels, and the question really comes back to, in fact, Mr. Herman lives on a parcel that abuts Pyramid Highway. It's not listed yet, but he can come in and ask for a neighborhood commercial piece, and we can see this all along the highway. And so I think that there's a better way to do it as opposed to amending the area plan. So I, just for that reason, I would not be supportive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Herman.
I just wanted to add that if I had the choice of having that business there as opposed to having the recreational marijuana right there across the school, from the road that comes down to, you know, from the school, I just, I think I would choose that. And I know a lot of you folks, and I know you're probably going to disagree with me, but I did second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner John.
I have a question, because this reminds me of what, we were supposed to have a time certain at 2:00 PM. What is the difference of changing the area plan vis-à-vis, I mean, what would be the other way, an SUP? Is that how, that would, what would be the, let me ask staff the expert, please, thank you. How would a person go about changing this, other than this kind of broad change? What's the other route?
Thank you for the question. This is something that we had investigated with the applicant if there were other alternatives in terms of processes that we could follow to get to that endpoint that they're trying to get to. This was the route that was determined that we could potentially take through our existing processes to be able to get to that point, to potentially allow for storage of operable vehicles on a neighborhood commercial property. We did investigate other options that simply were not feasible. We looked at potentially if a zone change might be an option. General commercial is not, that's something where it would potentially already be allowed, but that is within the Spanish Springs area plan. There cannot be additional general commercial. And in terms of...
That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Commissioner John has the floor. Okay, Commissioner John. Commissioner Hartung, do you have further discussion?
I do. And the reason is, and you're referring to Policy 1.3.3, because of the cap, which we had amended, and that's something that we're trying to work on right now. And I believe that that cap could be amended, because Hoco did not use all of the land that was allotted to them. So, again, I'm, it's, I just, I think that there's other ways.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, I got control of the meeting. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Stop. Thank you. I have one discussion I want to bring forward. This is not changing, this is not changing this to an allowed use, this is purely suggesting that this should be an SUP process, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That was the answer I needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm calling for the vote. All those in favor, please place your vote and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Please affirm your votes. Motion carries, four to one, with Commissioner Hartung being in the abstain, I mean, in the negative. All right, moving on. We are actually, at this time, we are going to take a break for lunch. It is now 12:20. We are going to be in recess until 1:30.
You are so cute. I love you. I just want to know what happened.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Um, no, we're gonna do, it's still a public hearing, we're gonna do budget first. Okay. We are back in session as the Board of County Commissioners Regular Board Meeting at this time. Mr. Manager, we are still in the public hearing. Uh, we are on to items 26, please.
Mr. Chair, um, and just a, you might want to note for the record that Commissioner Herman is no longer with us, she had to leave to catch an airplane.
Thank you, sir, for putting that on the record.
So, item 26, we are in public hearing for that item. That is discussion, possible action on the Washoe County tentative budget, as well as possible changes to the adoption of the final budget for fiscal year 2017-18, approved changes to position control for fiscal year 2018 indicated on attachment A, and approved fees indicated on attachment B1. This item, if needed, may be continued to May 30th, 2017 at 10:00 a.m. And Christine Valetich, Assistant County Manager, is going to begin our presentation discussion on this item.
Good mor- and good afternoon, Assistant County Manager.
Manager, I just wanted to say a few words before our Budget Manager, Mark Mathers, comes up here and present to you with all the numbers and the final changes since we last met with you. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the importance of a balanced budget, and moreover, a structurally balanced budget. You know, most state and local governments do have a statutory requirement to adopt a balanced budget, but that sometimes does not necessarily mean that it's a sustainable budget. For example, you could use an asset sale, or use fund balance to balance your budget for use for ongoing operating expenses. And what I'd like to highlight today is that, for the first time since, I believe, 2011 or '12, Washoe County has a structurally balanced budget. It's recognized as a best practice by the Government Finance Officers Association. Their definition of a truly structured balanced budget is one that supports financial sustainability for multiple-year budget staff. They all worked very, very hard to achieve this. This year, it's been a challenging budget year with all of the natural disasters and uncertainties that we've had, but just like to give a thanks out to all of them, and I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. For the record, Mark Mathers, Budget Manager. For this presentation, I thought I'd start with the changes between the April 25th Board Meeting and the final budget in front of you. Then we'll go through some summary statistics and information, and then finally get to the questions you had on April 25th. So, there are very few changes between April 25th and today. They are shown on this slide. There is a third new full-time position for the medical examiner that was funded from savings elsewhere in the medical examiner's budget. Likewise, the assessor identified savings in their budget for a reclass or kind of quasi-reorganization of a position within their organization. We also were made aware of the plan update for TMRPA, which you heard earlier today. That amounted to $34,750. And then, lastly, their, uh, the Regional Public Safety Training Center Manager Board approved filling an executive director position that had remained vacant for quite some time. And then there was a reallocation of costs, and that amounted to $160,000. And I guess I should have said, lastly, there were also some additional existing positions that were reclassified, and they are listed here. All in all, pretty minor changes between the recommended budget you saw on April 25th and today. And so where that leaves us again is a structurally balanced budget, revenues and transfers in of $332.87 million, equalling expenditures and transfers out of the same amount. We estimate that we will end fiscal year 17 with a total ending fund balance of $49.5 million, and an available ending fund balance of $45.7 million. Because the budget is balanced, those numbers carry through on then to fiscal year 18. Again, a total ending fund balance of just shy of $50 million, and an available ending fund balance, based on certain restrictions, of $45.7 million.
Mr. Mathers?
Yeah.
Mr. Manager, do we have copies of this presentation? Because it's very difficult for us to follow along with that, the numbers. I know if all four of us are trying to search through our packet to kind of follow on. So, is it your copies of this?
Yeah, yeah, I believe it is in the packet.
The PowerPoint? I don't have the PowerPoint. Well, okay.
I thought it was.
That's okay. But yeah, I mean, we, I understand that, but my point is, I'm trying to follow along, and I had a loss here.
I'll keep plunging for it.
Okay, keep going.
The numbers will get bigger as I, as I go through this.
I appreciate that.
Um, so for the county's general fund balance, again, going, you know, we are maintaining a fund balance of just shy of $50 million, because expenditures are rising as a percentage that looks lower for fiscal year 18. But again, in terms of total dollars, we are maintaining a fund balance of just under $15 million, I mean, $50 million, sorry. And, and the available fund balance equates to 13.8% for fiscal year 18. So, this, these are smaller numbers. Basically, what this is showing you is total governmental funds, budget of $544 million, and proprietary funds, i.e. our enterprise funds and our internal service funds of $90 million. In terms of special revenue funds, we all, all of these funds have ending fund balances within our, within the Board's policy, which calls for a fund balance of 10 to 17%. You'll notice, not a lot of variance between the beginning fund balance and ending fund balance, with the exception of the indigent tax levy fund where
Wait, it's in your packet.
We have reserved a fair amount of money for contingencies related to the senior center kitchen and senior center projects. And this summarizes capital and debt funds. We continue to pay our debt service in full. In terms of capital funds, I'll talk about that in the next item for the CIP. And then in terms of our enterprise and internal service funds, they all relatively healthy. The utilities fund numbers look huge, and that's based on the assets, utility assets, pipelines, et cetera, that are capitalized and quantified here. In terms of follow-up questions then, on April 25th, we wanted to kind of go through this real quickly with you. There was a question or a request to review our historical park expenditures with the Open Space and Regional Parks Commission. We had planned to do that on May 2nd, but there was no quorum, so we will bring that back to that body on June 6th. We will come back in terms of connecting the citizen survey results with budget recommendations mid-year, where we hopefully will have funds after dealing with the flood-related costs and the unknowns, and have recommendations for you. At that time, we'll link up the citizen survey results with those recommendations. There was also a question to look at Incline Village and Wadsworth Justice Courts, and look at use of technology to bring costs down, and we've had several discussions with the Reno Justice Court on how that might be done. That will take some effort and work and analysis going forward. Lastly, there was a question about booking fees charged by the detention center, so I wanted to kind of go through this carefully, since, you know, there are various questions that kind of hover around this, this issue. First, state law does allow for the charging of non-indigent prisoners for the weekend. That fee is set at $25 a day. And then we also are allowed to charge for reimbursement of actual costs. There's no set amount, but the sheriff's office charges $30 a day. So, in both cases, the sheriff's office does charge fees to prisoners, non-indigent prisoners, but unfortunately, oftentimes, those go unpaid and, and then are sent to collections. So, we've noted the annual revenues from both of those fees, not terribly significant, but the sheriff's office does make an effort to collect them, and then the collections division of the Controller's Office, again, makes an effort, goes on people's credit reports, when they're buying a house, a lot of times, that's when they pay.
Mr. Mathers?
Yes, sir.
If I can interrupt you for a minute, Mr. Commissioner Hartung would like a quick question.
Just on the booking fees, when we brought up the booking fees, the inference, Mr. Mathers, was the ability to charge the agency that was delivering the prisoner. So, so in other words, whether it's NHP, or whether it's RPD, or whether it's SPD, or, you know, I know the federal agencies refund the money, but the other, I don't think the other agencies do, and it, and it's just really a matter of cost recovery, because the sad part is, is that many times, it's easier to just put the person in jail, book them, rather than trying to come up with some alternative that can be viable for that particular prisoner.
Yes, you're correct. So, the next section of this shows that the NRS does allow the charging to agencies for prisoners detained at a county detention facility, but it's a bilateral agreement that must be entered into. And, and so we went through the history here on this chart, it may be difficult to read. In 1987, there was an agreement between the City of Reno, Sparks, and the county, where they paid, those two cities did pay the county some amount of money, in Reno's case, $1.386 million, Sparks, $500,001. That was never indexed for inflation, so they paid those amounts for years and years and years. And then going through the history here, we found that in the 2001 to 2003 kind of era, there were dueling fiscal equity reports, a number of issues, you know, kind of bantered back and forth. And, and so we did find a staff report that recommended the county cease collecting those monies from Reno and Sparks. At the same time, the City of Reno reduced its property tax rate by one cent, and the county raised its rate by one cent, so that appeared to be, you know, kind of a, a switch that was agreed to as part of ceasing charging the City of Reno. What, we tried, so what, yes, sir?
But, but rather than just this sort of flat rate.
Right.
I would rather have a literal cost recovery. You bring in 112, you pay for 112. And, and, you know, it's just, it's, it's real simple stuff. It's no different than when you go to the supermarket, if you buy 10 cans of, of soup, you pay for 10 cans of soup, hopefully. You know, you don't slip four in your jacket and walk out.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Because I do have a little bit of background on that, and I can tell you, and I can't remember what legislative session, but the county did seek legislation. So, so, Mr. Mathers referenced statute that allows us to enter into an agreement, sort of for a contract, flat rate kind of, kind of situation. We also, at some point in time, sought legislation that would give us the authority to basically charge an entity a per booking fee, and, and that legislation was not successful. So, it could be something we could, we could raise again in, in next session.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mathers, continue, please.
And, and, and part of the point of this discussion is to show the Board our costs for maintaining a detention center versus the revenues associated with that detention center. So, the top line shows you our actual expenses running the detention center, doesn't include any overhead, but the direct cost to operate the detention center was a little over $53 million. We do have a county jail override property tax rate of 7.74 cents that generated $10 million. We do receive federal incarceration fees of four. So, all in all, we receive total program or tax revenues of $14.775 million, leaving a cost to the general fund to operate the detention center of $38.6 million. So, and then, and then below, we took the value of that one cent property tax swap, and it's $1.3 million. So even after deducting that, the net cost to the county to operate a detention center in fiscal year 16 was $37.3 million. It's a significant cost for the county. The detention center costs alone is half of the sheriff's budget. So, we did want to document and quantify, to your point, these costs.
Let's just hold, let's, can we finish first, and then we'll, we'll get to the end here. He's not far.
And this chart shows you those costs over time, and both, the cost of the detention center itself, and then the net general fund cost of the detention center after deducting revenues has increased $10 million in the last 10 years. So, it used to be a little bit over $43 million to operate the detention center. Today, it's $53 million. That's the blue line. So, that concludes our analysis of the follow-up questions on April 25th. The next steps for this board item then would be approving the fiscal year 18 final budget. Then we would submit that to the state by June 1st, and then we'd come back to you for this mid-year review after we kind of quantify the unknowns, including state legislation, prepare a disaster financing plan, if you will, that we're still working on, and then determine what is available in the general fund for above-base recommendations.
Manager Slatter, have you signed in to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up and just highlight, just some of the, some of the pieces that I picked out of, out of, you know, our proposed budgets. We are adding to our SOBR 24 program, a program that's become very successful, just in the short time it's been open. And we are consolidating our planning division in our community services department, consolidating planning and building into one division, adding new positions at the medical examiner's office, and assistant medical examiner, or forensic medical transcriber. That pushes us closer to, as they seek accreditation in their field as a facility, two pre-trial services officers in the district court. We're expanding some park hours, and additionally, in some of our special revenue funds, adding additional youth advisors at juvenile services. We are enhancing our capital improvement planning process, a new health educator at Health District. And as Mark Mathers, as Mr. Mathers mentioned, a, a director at our Regional Public Safety Training Center, a position that the sheriff's office has, has filled just from within for a number of years, and now we'll be adding that position as, as an ongoing position that's funded. So, I just wanted to highlight, a few of the highlights, a few of the things that we, we see as very positive in this budget. As was mentioned by both Ms. Valetich and Mr. Mathers, it's been a very difficult process to get through in light of all of our natural disasters, some other unknown costs. Our method going forward will be to continually monitor. We do that in a normal year, but we're going to be extra vigilant of monitoring our budget as we go forward, and if and when we can make additional enhancements on that, that little bit of discretionary funds that we will have, we will bring that back to the Board for review and approval.
Great, thank you. Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question. Mr. Mathers, have, have we looked at possible ways to fill this $37 million? I mean, outside of our general fund, are there, are there any funds that we could tap, any, anything we can tap to, put to the sheriff's department so that it's, this is not coming out of our general fund, but that we could maybe even still keep this, a part of this out of our general fund, but expand the number of sheriff deputies, and, which of course is a really necessary thing?
Yes, ma'am, Mark Mathers, Budget Manager, for the record. You know, in addition to the fee, the concept of fees and cost sharing with other agencies, there are several other financing options available to the county. It's something we would intend to bring back to the Board.
Okay, good.
You know, after the budget presentation here, and after legislative sessions concluded, and we understand kind of what those impacts were, we're prepared to bring some concepts, options back to the Board.
Good, thank you very much. And then, one other thing, Mr.?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, I, as I've looked through this, I've seen nothing that relates to dispatch and our ongoing issue of dispatch. Is, is there, are there funds set aside for us to address that issue? Do we need funds set aside to address that issue, or is this something we're just going to have to deal with as we continue to move through the effort to get a dispatch resolution?
Right, so, and, and this is also in response to the earlier question about dispatch, and where we are in that process. City of Reno, the report, we had a consultant who prepared a report with recommendations. Those recommendations, three recommendations that show varying levels of savings related to changes we could make to dispatch. That report has gone to the City of Reno to be presented to their council. We are at staff, we are working on, then the next step, a, a consult, a joint meeting between this Board and the City Council to further have discussions. I don't know that additional funds are necessary to, to implement the recommendations in that report. It's just a matter of working through the process of getting some agreement on which of the, which of the options that we have, and what savings we can realize, and as importantly in that discussion, where those savings then go.
And, and as I recall from looking at that study, the results of that study, the number one way to save money was to turn it all over to the sheriff's department. That was the, that was the, we saved the most money by turning it all, the whole process over to the sheriff's department and letting it be run regionally.
That's correct, and it's, it's, it's in time, but, but that, that was one of the three options, and that was, that did produce the most savings.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to piggyback on Commissioner Burke Bigler's statement, it's not just a cost savings, but it's an efficiency protocol. I, I believe, I believe it'll be more efficient to have dispatch consolidated into, into one place. And so I think, I think there's, there's, there's a genuine reason right there, just, just the efficiency portion of it. Couple of questions, Mr. Mathers, and so these are some of the cost breakdowns that I think we have to understand before we can talk about cost recovery. And so when we talk about booking fees, the cost per inmate to book, you know, breaks down to, you know, paperwork, health check, all of the associated costs, TB test, I know that we, that we TB test, and I, I know some agencies now have stopped TB testing because the incidence of tuberculosis are so low in the population. The example is, is that one of our emergency rooms, all of their physicians used to have to be TB tested, but they no longer do, or not tested, but have a, you know, tested for TB, and then, and then dealt with on a regular basis. They've stopped that because the incidents are so low. So, so perhaps there's some cost savings that we can look at there. And then, we, we really need to break out on a, on a per inmate basis, the healthcare costs, and can they be made up by the use of, of private insurance? Many of these people will go into the detention facility and feign indigency, because if, if they have insurance, they're going to be on the hook for certain kinds of deductibles, and they don't want to do that. So, they'll feign indigency, and, and we don't, and we don't necessarily know that they have insurance, so perhaps there's a way that we can work the system backwards, and, and not just through private insurance, but of course, through Medicare and the Affordable Care Act, and et cetera. I don't, I, I don't know the, the exact working parts without doing a little more study, but I think that, that we may be able to just revisit how we do that. And we, and I think, I think one of the important things is, is trying to understand the cost of bringing an inmate into the system, housing the inmate, healthcare for the inmate, and then, of course, how do we move that inmate through the system up to, you know, the point of trial? Are there, are there any savings that we can, can gain by not moving that, that inmate around as much, and, and, you know, all the transportation, and et cetera? Even transportation for healthcare, is there, are there ways that we can save money by not transporting the, the inmate and, and doing what we need to do right at the detention facility? And then my final question has to do not so much with the detention facility, but with OPEB, and our, our continuing payments to OPEB, and is it a statutory obligation that we make those payments? Because I know, we're trying to make up some, some room here, but is there, are there ways that we can potentially back off on some of those payments that might give us a little more liquidity to deal with some of these ongoing costs until we can make some changes and, and, you know, sort of figure it out? And, and is it possible to take those OPEB payments and maybe draw them out over a longer period of time? I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartung. And, you know, and, Mr. Mathers, the discussion, I, that kind of comes to mind in regards to kind of improving this budget going forward, is some of the unfunded mandates that we'll be seeing coming out of legislature, how we're coming, while we're discussing. I know Bodycams and the current discussion is to pay for that through E911 funding. We don't know all of the implications of that, what that data storage and that is going to be like, and what that's, how that's going to impact the sheriff's budget. And we keep talking about a growing sheriff's budget without truly the needs that come out of that growing sheriff budget. Also, we talk about, you know, returning a number of the programs that we have seen over the years be cut, and try to restore those to a once, you know, one, a previous standard. And I would like to start seeing some of those cost efficiencies, as Commissioner Burke Bigler and Commissioner Hartung pointed out, be more really sought after in regards to the way we approach some of these, these, this discussion going forward, because it's, it's, it's a challenge that I see, I think we're going to continue to see, and the impacts are going to be tremendous. You know, the Body Cam is just one of many, I know, that are going to impact the way we do. And we, and, you know, and Commissioner Hartung, to your point, I, I think we need the involvement of also the justice system and the courts, you know, and their participation in helping us finding some of those costs, those cost efficiencies as we move forward. So, I really, not only task finance, but task staff to help and, to help us initiate that, those discussions as we move through the, into this new, into the new budget process. So, any further discussion at this time, by any of the commissioners? Commissioner Jung? Nothing? All right. Seeing nothing at this time. Yeah, we're looking for, I don't have any, I don't have any people signed in at this time for a public comment at the, on this item. So, with that, looking for a motion to accept? I have a motion, and, I have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, please affirm your vote. All right, and we are on to, I, yes, and please note, for the record, Commissioner Herman was absent for the vote on the budget. And we are on to item, Agenda Item 27, Mr. Manager.
This is also a public hearing item, discussion, possible action on County Manager's Recommended Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal years 2018 through 2022. This item may be continued if necessary to May 30th, 2017 at 10:00 a.m. Mr. Mathers?
For the record, Mark Mathers, Budget Manager. We have, we do have a PowerPoint for this as well, and this, I 100% sure this is part of your packet.
I have that one. Didn't have the one.
So, the capital improvement program is a five-year plan for maintenance, repair, rehabilitation, and expansion of the county's infrastructure. and expansion of the county's infrastructure. This is something done annually. We have, over the last several years, made various improvements to the process and those, the process is described in your, in your staff report. Departments present requests. Most of those requests come from our community services department that's tasked with the maintenance of our infrastructure, and also our tech services department, who similarly is tasked with maintenance of our IT infrastructure. And then there is a CIP committee that reviews those requests, prioritizes them, and then based on the level of funding, makes the recommendations before you. I'm happy to note that due to one-time monies becoming available, the amount of general fund support to the CIP has increased from $5 million in fiscal year 17 to $7.7 million in fiscal year 18. Still not enough to cover all of our needs, but certainly helps quite a bit in meeting some of our needs. So I will go very quickly through the highlights of the capital improvement program. We talk about them in the staff report as well. First, in terms of park capital projects, we have nearly $5 million budgeted in park capital projects. Those are funded out of both our park capital fund and our capital improvement fund, and there is a list there of the major projects that have been budgeted for beginning in fiscal year 18. That does include several projects that are carried over from prior years. So we're carrying over the funding in hopes that those projects are completed in fiscal year 18. In terms of next kind of series of highlights, we are investing more than 1.1 million in two library projects in 18, both of them at the downtown Reno library. One is a roof replacement, and as you can see, roof replacement costs are quite extraordinary, $600,000 for that, and then an additional $500,000, $500,000 for renovation of the downtown library. And a good portion of that is funded by a Tequino Family Trust donation that our library director, Jeff Scott, managed to, to acquire. So listed there are some of the improvements where we're kind of changing space between floors and making it a, a little bit more pleasant, usable facility. What's not noted here is we have an additional two library projects, again roughly between $500,000 and $1 million slated for fiscal year 19 as well. So we are trying to invest again in those library facilities, as we'll talk about. We also know that there's a need for some kind of improvements or at least options for you to consider in the North Valleys. Probably, well, our biggest project is replacement of our 15-year-old voting equipment. This is something we've worked with our registrar voters on. The total cost of the replacement of that equipment is in the neighborhood of $4 million. What we are proposing is to phase that over two years, with the first half being funded essentially in fiscal year 18. There was talk, discussion of the state providing assistance to rural counties and possibly Washoe County to help offset some of those costs. I have not heard from the registrar about whether that's going to be a reality here in the next several weeks, kind of skeptical, but that is a possibility that hopefully comes through. And in terms of the county facilities, we've invested again more than a million dollars at the sheriff's facility. That facility is reaching the, the point in its life cycle when major rehab and repairs are just needed every, virtually every year. So you can see there are two projects that comprise the million dollars for our county complex. We are going to be replacing the roofing for buildings C and D that have leaked over the last year. Also included is a facility master plan. So we are now seeing some departments request more space, and before we consider building improvements or expansions of the county complex, CSD will contract with a master plan to look at space needs first, to see if we can be efficient with our dollars. And then we've also budgeted $250,000 for various security upgrades. And then for other county facilities, you see there are a little bit over $800,000 being spent on our court facility at 75 Court Street. I also should have said on the sheriff's facility, we are working on a consultant contract to do a facility master plan there, and that's in anticipation of the need for an infirmary, a new infirmary. So it's something we're working on as well. So the attached summary shows you how we've planned capital expenditures over the next five years. This year's, first year of the CIP amounts to a little bit more than $40 million. That is programmed in the operating budget you just approved. So we've provided funding totaling $40 million for those projects. As the board knows, there are some significant capital needs for the county in the next five years. These list the major facilities, either new facilities, expansion of facilities, or repairs of facilities that are on our radar screen. So those, top, top priority would be replacement of the county's radio system. That's something we're working on with the state, doing a joint RFP that you've seen. And then in no particular order from there, again, detention infirmary is something that's been noted as a, as a need going forward. South Valley's park expansion, where we own land, is a, another need related to population growth. North Valley's library, similarly, you know, we want to bring back an option for you at some point to consider. District court has asked for a new, a new building, and then we know we have a need for new senior centers and kitchen facilities, and we are looking at that right now. So we didn't make any final decisions on any of those requests. We're not at a point to recommend funding, but in each of those cases, it would, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to cash fund those facilities, given the size of the, the costs involved. So we likely will use debt financing at some point. Fortunately, the county has done a good job of paying down its debt. It paid down almost half of its total general obligation debt from fiscal year eight to fiscal year 15, so that gives us room and capacity to issue new debt for any or all of those facilities. Of course, that'll mean we have to service the debt, and that'll be, that'll require revenues that would otherwise go to operating purposes. And that concludes my presentation on the CIP.
Thank you, Mr. Mathers. This time, Commissioner Harton, have you signed in?
Swallow my nutter butter. On your slide five, Mr. Mathers, it talked about building C and D needing new roofs. Will that, will that be the, sort of the little rogue pieces in, in the assessor's office? Are we going to take care of that?
Yes, yes, for sure, yes.
Good. I, I know that that's been an ongoing point of contention for the assessor.
Yes.
And then another question is, and, and this is, this is a tough question to ask, but what's the usage, and, and you, you probably can't answer this, but, but are we really getting our money's worth in the downtown libraries or the library? Or would we be better off letting that space be utilized for, you know, the same as they did with the post office, more for a, you know, revitalization of the downtown area and, and trying to build up our libraries in the North Valleys? Library in Sun Valley, library in the South Valleys, the, the one in Sparks, and, you know, trying to get the libraries more into the community as opposed to that one location downtown? Because as that building ages, it becomes very, very expensive to maintain. And I'm not sure whether our dollars wouldn't be better spent in, in trying to have smaller facilities that are, are in the community. It's, it's, it's not, not a, not a reduction, in fact, it's an increase, but it's just, it's just trying to get them into the community where they can be utilized.
Yeah, understood, understood. I think we can bring that back and have that discussion about the libraries and their However, I think, from my recollection, I believe that's one of the highest, that is the one of the highest visited libraries in our system, number two behind Sierra View. So the two, yeah, so I mean, we'd have to relocate that library and find that CIP for that in a different, and we'd have to find a building for that in a different place.
Again, the smaller, smaller, more community oriented.
Yeah, but when you, understood, but that is one of our highest traffic. And we'll bring that back at a different, that's it for a different time. Mr. Commissioner Jung?
And most importantly, that's the library board's decision. They, they are duly in charge of their CIP, where they put the libraries, how much they're going to put into those libraries, not the Board of County Commissioners.
Correct.
So, and I, but there, there are challenges with that aging building. It's, the HVAC is terrible. The, even though the plants are beautiful, I mean, I happen to love that those plants are there, they're very high maintenance for upkeep. And the library board has kicked that around. The trouble is, they have no money to be realistically thinking of a, a new and better location, because the location is not the problem, it's the building. But that, that would be, unless we raise that government services tax, that's, that'd be 50 years from now before that library, a capital improvement program fund was ready to do such a big thing, so.
You'll still be around.
Not be around. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Any further discussion on, on, you know, I think this is, you know, obviously we do have challenges here within the county, and Commissioner Jung brings up a very valid point that, you know, a lot of our, a lot of our assets are, are aging and to a point of, you know, been fully depreciated for some time. And we need to start looking at some of those assets. You know, the man, I did, I did task the manager with looking at where of all of our assets are within the downtown and within the county, and what those assets, what our holdings are, and what some of those challenges would be to repurpose certain buildings, move certain buildings and consolidate certain services into, into certain centers. So I think those are problems, but that's also for that capital improvement committee to, to look at going forward. But from my standpoint, based upon the presentation today on the program that's been outlined, the one thing I would like to see move further up the list is obviously, I know the 800 megahertz system is something of importance, and, but the district court building, you know, obviously if we're looking at this list as a list of, a hit list on the, on page seven of the slide, you know, moving that district court building or the, in the senior center, seniors kitchen should come in front of those South Valley's parks expansion and that North Valley's library, just because we need to continue to address those immediate concerns and truly what I believe is foundation services before we get to some of our ancillary services. All right, further, no further discussion. I don't have any public signed in on this item for the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion to accept the report. Okay?
Mr. Chair, that would be a motion to approve.
A motion to approve and adopt the, the CIP.
Yes.
Okay, so I need you to put it, okay? Got it? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Place your votes. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Herman being absent. All right, Mr. Manager, we are back to item seven. And we are, we will close the public hearing.
Item se, seven is recommendation to, one, award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsible, responsible bidder for the Washoe County Social Services Visitation Center renovation project. Staff recommends Raymond Brothers Construction, the amount of $1,100,000. And if approved, two, recommendation to approve interfund appropriation transfers to track certain grant in capital funds. And three, direct the compter's office to make appropriate appropriation transfers. Net impact to the county budget is zero.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. I'll call for, oh, look, I have a public comment. This is Kathy Randhorst, and she's not here. So we don't have no public, we have no comments signed in at this time. Bring it back to the board. Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Submit your vote. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Herman being absent. Mr. Manager, we are on to item eight, oh, no, I'm sorry, item 14.
Mr. Chair, item 14 is recommendation to approve amendment number one to the contract for healthcare services for the Washoe County Detention Facility between Washoe County and NEF Care Incorporated for detention inmate medical services for the period of June 1, 2017 through May 31, 2018 for $6,825,807.12 based on a monthly average daily population of 1,200 inmates until a new RFP can be released or the county can join an existing contract if applicable.
All right. Commissioners, do we need a presentation at this time on this?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask that we require, that we, the commission, approve requirement, and maybe we have to bring this back for approval, or maybe staff can do it, that the sheriff provide us on a monthly basis a status report of what is going on in the jail as, and a status report of the contract with NEF Care and how our prisoners are being treated as far as healthcare is concerned. I feel this is an important issue for us because it has unfortunately gotten so much public attention, and, and our constituents are contacting us, wanting to know what we're doing to help make sure that the prisoners are taken care of. And so I think a monthly report from the sheriff would be an appropriate response.
Okay. Great. So we've got direction to staff.
Thanks.
Looking for, looking for a motion. Have a motion? Somebody's got to push it, but I got a second. Commissioner Harton, call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Please affirm your vote. Motion carries for zero with Commissioner Herman being absent. Mr. Manager, we are on to item 16.
Item 16 is discussion possible direction on the contract and services currently provided by ATB Services, a Colorado limited liability company that administers the alarm registration and false alarm ordinance, Washington County Code, Chapter 54, to ensure ATB Services is meeting the terms of the contracted services agreement with Washoe County. I know we have representatives in the sheriff's office here who I think can provide some information related to this issue, and I think then we have questions from commissioners.
Can you draw a straw on that?
Yeah. That's it. We're not dealing, we're not dealing with this.
We thought I was kidding, man. We're not dealing with this. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Russ Peterson with the sheriff's office for the record, and ask away. You know, back in 2009, part of this agenda item, the commissioners at that time gave really Washoe County Sheriff's Office some direction to go ahead and privatize, you know, be more government efficient, go out to the private sector, find out where we can get some cost savings. So this is one of the alarm ordinance that was adopted back in 2010. It was amended in, or sorry, 2009, amended in 2010, and then amended in 2012. We've been with the same company, although that company was purchased by another, so it was ATB Services, now it's Pan Am. It's the same company that Reno, City Reno uses, the City of Sparks uses, although slightly different online services provided. So I'm happy to answer any particular questions, or if there's specifics that you would like to, we can provide some statistical information. Where this has probably come up in some concern is that we've had some issues with billing, billing practices. We had probably about a dozen, maybe close to two dozen homeowners back in January, February, right around that timeframe, that received late notices but never received the initial notice of payment or, or an invoice. And so there was some concerns there. We have a little over 1,000 people that are registered on alarm, so again, about, about a dozen, two dozen people who have called to us. Now that doesn't mean there's not more out there who just, who just paid the late fee. They could have just paid the late fee and, and thought that they missed that payment. So it, it is a concern for us. I know it's a concern for, for some of the commissioners who receive some of those phone calls as well, and certainly try to answer some questions, but the contract's been in place since 2009. It was the only company that were, at the time, there was no company within the state of Nevada. In our little research that we have done, there's still not a company in the state of Nevada that would, would do this work. It's not a huge moneymaker, if you want to call it that, for, for the amount of alarms and the mailings that they do. They range from maybe 90 to roughly $110,000 a year that company gets. And then we're in the 120, probably 140, I'd have to look at the exact numbers, but about 120, 140, the county on those, on those different fees, be it registration fees, false alarm fees, whatever that case. fees, false alarm fees, whatever that case may be, comes back to Washoe County, to offset, really, the general fund, and then obviously, a budget offsets those costs to the Sheriff's Office through the county budget process. So if there's something specific I can answer, I'm happy to do so.
Commissioner Hartong.
I'll start. As you know, I received a late notice myself, never having received the bill. The question really comes back to, we had two dozen people that, I'll just use that number, a dozen or two dozen, whatever the number happens to be, it doesn't matter, that actually made the complaint. That doesn't mean, and you told me that, how many late notices were sent out, 17 something?
We'll have to dive through the exact numbers, but we did get that. There were hundreds, there were hundreds of late notices that were mailed out.
Yes, exactly.
And there were various excuses from the company of what that was, weather-related, or, correct?
I, you know, I asked to speak to someone in authority, and they literally refused my request, telling me that I needed to contact the Sheriff's Office about any billing issues, essentially, is what it came back to. And my response was, okay, I can do that. I have the ability to contact the Sheriff's Office, I know exactly who to call. Sadly, it was you, Russ, but the...
Why, you don't want to talk to Russ? I'm not saddened. I always enjoy getting phone calls from all of you.
Yeah, of this type. I felt bad for you. Have you, have you found it yet?
Thanks.
What the number is?
Yeah. So here on the late registration fees, it averages...
No, 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 how many, how many late, how many late notices did they send out?
And that's what, roughly, that's what I'm trying to, late renewals, on average, we, I mean, what I can tell you is what average people paid, not necessarily how many renewals. Every month, average 37, but I will say 167 went out of February 2017, so that was our higher peak.
I thought it was a lot higher than that.
There was an Excel spreadsheet, I believe I sent you, that had, like, a historical, three or four historical, which was just nonstop pages, pages of late fee.
Yes. And, and so, so they send out these late fees, somebody just pays them, and then what you have is no accounting of where those late fees went. Did you guys get the late fees?
So yes, the typical late fee is roughly $25. Seven to eight of that goes to the company, the remainder of the funds go to the general fund, or through to the county.
We have an accounting of that?
Yes, we get a monthly accounting of that, yes, sir.
Okay, because at our last speaking, you did not tell me that we were getting any of that money.
That is, that is accurate, because at that time, we could not figure out, because in the contract, it shows that the county provides that budgetary. I could not locate somebody from the county, alls I had to do was go across the hallway, and in our own building is where the accounting was coming from, from monthly, and then that report is provided. So...
I'm still, I'm still terribly concerned that this even occurred, because it, even the story was not consistent.
From the company.
One was a computer, exactly. One was a computer glitch. I was told that it had to do with the mail. I believe one person, somebody's dog died. I jest. But actually, there was reported death in the family, that a person had some personal issue, and they, and the person who was dealing with all that stuff, and so it got sent out, and that's what somebody had told me. They...
Yes, sir.
They had been told. That's, that's not a really good way to operate a business that, if they want to operate their own private business that way, that's between them and their clientele. When they put the county in the middle of that, and they're really utilizing Washoe County's name via the SO, you know, that's where I'm, I'm going to get involved, essentially, as a, as a board member.
Yes, sir.
I still would love to have them in front of us. I'd like, I really would like to have a full accounting back of the, all the numbers, not an average, I'd like to know what those numbers are in total, each month. There should be no reason why they're just sort of randomly generating late fees when they don't send out the bills.
Yes, sir. And I, in our contract, it does show that the county commissioners have, in our contract, have the ability to call the company in front of you. And certainly, if that's what the board wishes to do, so you can absolutely have the company come forward and explain their, their mailing process, their registration process. I would also suggest that they are working on a new platform for registration online, similar to maybe what Sparks and Reno currently has, it's not on our system. That may be a healthier process, might be more convenience for homeowners, instead of mailings, being able to go through some of the online.
One fellow did indicate that Sparks had an easier system to navigate. It was right on their website.
Yes, sir. When you compare the two, when you go on Sparks, it's a little bit different format, they have some videos. The format that we have, as far as the county, and I, quite honestly, we tried to get some answers ahead of time. We don't know if that is a company issue, or if that may be a structural issue, that we just need to work with our IT side of the house, because it sits on our, on Washoe County's website, not necessarily the Sheriff's Office website, but the county. So there's some things that we had to dive in. The company did indicate that they have a new platform that they have been working on. Lieutenant Barbosa tried to get an answer of, when is that timeline going to happen? Because that needs to happen sooner than later. But unfortunately, we did not get a response back on when that would happen.
And one fellow indicated to me that he had sent them the check, and the check sat uncashed for, and it was, he knows that they got it, because it was issued through his, his, the automated system in his bank, essentially, you know, you do your online bill pay. And, and so, the bank says, yeah, they got the check, it showed that they got it, but then they never, they never showed receipt of the funds.
And there's some challenges that we have from our end. Lieutenant Barbosa manages it, and she'll get phone calls from people, and, and they vary. There's some legit, I don't want to say, but some very concerned citizens of, similar to what you're describing, that late fees, late fees, things of that nature. But then we get those citizens who are just, they're upset because they got charged maybe a $3 convenience, or $2 convenience fee, or they feel, yes, or they feel that the late fee, or the false alarm fee's too high, you know, and she does her best to really navigate through that, and what's, what's really legitimate issues, you know, whether, you know, it is weather-related, you know, just a freak event, and the alarms went off, to those who just don't like any fees whatsoever. So it's difficult on our end to navigate through that, and we do our best, you know, to hear what the citizen has to say, and it's a judgment call. And she makes that judgment call, I don't want to say daily, but she certainly gets those phone calls probably more than we would like to see, and...
And I guess, I guess, just sort of, my closing thought is this. Sadly, we've had to subcontract this out. That's, that's very tough for me, because, you know, people get angry that they send their bills somewhere else, and a piece of it is culled off the top, and it doesn't stay in the state of Nevada. So that's one of the, you know, one of the complaints that I've received. Another complaint that I have is, is just the consistency in the billing. And regard, if they go to a, just go to a paperless billing system, force that, which many institutions have done, which is fine. So you go to a paperless billing system, and you can demonstrate when that bill was actually generated, and sent to, and et cetera. And then there can be other ways. If it bounces back, because the email address is incorrect, then they can deal with that, and those are understandable. But at the end of the day, I've just been very, very displeased. I don't care about the fees, as far as false alarms and that, those are, those are fees that, you know, you guys establish, because there is time involved in an officer responding to a false alarm. I get that. And a complaint for a false alarm, if somebody's alarm goes off, you know, because their cat, you know, set it off, or whatever it happens to be, it doesn't matter, somebody still had to respond. But the billing, we really, I would, I'd love to see them in front of me. That's, that's my, that's my request. I don't know whether the rest of the board feels that way, but I'd like to, I'd really like to get this process streamlined, and if we're going to have a relationship with them, I want to know, we should be informed that there was a glitch in their system. Did anybody know in the SO that there was a glitch in the system, and that they had inadvertently mailed out, you know, Lord only knows how many late notices?
So I know historically, we kind of find those glitches, is when those phone calls start happening.
Right.
And we reach out to the company. There was an incident that happened, and don't, maybe off on timeline, but about a year and a half, two years ago, and certainly, it turned out to be a computer issue on their end of incorrectly invoicing. And then this most recent one, similar to what, you know, some of the reasons that they gave you, were the same reasons that, you know, Lieutenant Barbosa got, was weather issues, you know, they're out of Colorado. Colorado certainly had a big storm like we did. But, you know, I, the bills that I receive personally, they seem to always arrive. I've never had one that's been showing up late. Somehow, they always come through. So it's certainly questionable from the company's side to have so many that just didn't arrive. I, it's hard for me to believe that the postal service had that many errors.
All right. So Chief Deputy, I have a couple of questions in regards to the, so, when was, the contract was initiated in 2009?
Yes, sir.
When is the termination date of that contract?
It renews automatically every two years.
So every two years, it's automatic, and for as long as we want? There's no, no change of extensions? Okay. That's my first issue. Secondly, you said, how, okay, how many, how many homes in the unincorporated area are in, are on the service? How many, how many are homes are we collecting fees from?
7,100 homes.
7,100 homes. And you said that was for kind of a grand total, like, they keep about 90,000, we get 120 out of that? So a grand, roughly a grand total, $210,000 that, for funding?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
I'm sorry, sir, it just, it does average out, I mean, it's...
Yeah, give or take 200,000, let's just say.
Yes.
Depending on who moves out, and whatever.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the purpose of this is for false alarm, if they, if individuals, if we have to have staff time to respond to false alarms, right?
Yes, sir.
But it does go into the general fund, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
So it's not really allocated to any specific funding for staff time, it's just general fund?
Yeah, this is, this was a county commissioner-driven county code. This really has nothing to do with the Sheriff's Office, other than we're managing...
So we could change this at any time?
Whatever direction you give me today, is, it could be, it could all go away if you choose today, or it could be continued?
Do you, okay, for the $120,000 in time and effort that you have to do in your office, do you feel it's, do you feel it's beneficial to your very, your $90 million budget? Do you feel that that 120,000 really makes a difference, one way or another?
Yep. I will say, we actually did some calculations, just real rough calculations yesterday, for the amount of, what's good about this, this, since it's been implemented, our false alarms that we've been responding to have slowly been diminishing. That could be for a bunch of different reasons. One, because of the ordinance technology, a lot of people just don't even have an alarm system anymore, they have a system that's set up to go straight to an app on their phone, so there's no need for an alarm monitoring company. So there could be a variety of reasons, but the money that is collected on the county side is paying for our response time to the false alarms.
Okay. All that aside, so we can do direct policy as we move forward, if we need, if we see fit to change it. Do we have the capacity in office to do this? If we were to take everything off, cut off ATB, cancel the contract, and we want to maintain this false alarm, do we have the capacity to do this? Would we, I mean, $90,000 that we're paying out to some service in Colorado, I'm sure, I'm sure that we could employ an individual here locally to do that. And do we have the capacity, because it doesn't sound like it's very, other than signing people up and collecting the fees from their alarm company, or the individual themselves, what else is so, so dynamic about what this ATB is doing, that we couldn't do it in-house?
That would really be a question, really, for probably collections, possibly, their staffing. I can tell you Douglas County pays a full-time person to run Douglas County's. I will say that when we talked to that individual, they didn't know how many alarms they had, but they knew it was a whole lot less than our 7,000, and that's a full-time employee. So I would imagine that a full-time employee would be able to manage this for the county. And probably, at the end of the day, with our response time, that one full-time employee, it might be awash, financially, it might be awash, maybe, maybe a little bit still in the good. Just get rough numbers off the top of my head.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Jung?
I think we need to do a lot more research on this, but I do remember this, when we enacted this ordinance. And this was driven by, one, we were in the middle of the recession, and two, everybody was coming down here and telling us, you have to run government like a business, which we did. We subcontracted it, and now you're asking to bring it back in-house, and not run government like a business. So I mean, I think it's important to know the history behind all of this, and who's responsible for said history. And then, I'm not in favor of hiring somebody that just administers alarms for people in their homes. I think people need to upgrade, right? You can get it right on your iPhone. So I'm not in favor of that. And I think that Commissioner Hartong, he seems like he has the one with the most experience with this. Why don't you set up a meeting with the ADT, or whoever they are now, and...
I'd love to.
I think you should, I don't, I think it's out of the sheriff's hands. I think, we really kind of gave it to the sheriff, and he was lovely enough to take it back then, but it was one more, one more thing that they had to do. So I think that you could probably get a whole lot furtherers, cut all the bureaucracy out, talk to them one-on-one, and, you know, kind of use the carrot and the stick, and say, you know what, we're thinking, well, maybe we'll just bring it all in-house, because this has to be a substantial contract for them, considering the ability to make any money on this is so very narrow on that margin. So I think you, and we as a board should give you that direction, go negotiate with them. And you can tell them, we're going to change your ordinance, you're in business.
Get rid of it altogether.
Or get rid of it altogether.
Well, and that's, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that's the direction I'm leaning, because, I mean, if we're, if it's really not, I mean, what I'd like to know is, you know, how many falsies do we get where the deputy actually shows up? Do we know that number?
It was a little over 1,000 alarms that we responded to, and six were actual victims of a crime.
Okay.
Just this last year alone. So you're talking a very small percentage were real alarms, and the rest were false.
Right, and the rest were false.
So if I may just add a piece to it, and absolutely, as a commission board, you can do what you want with that alarm notice. That's something that we, then I would have to take back to the sheriff. The sheriff would have to make that decision, from a community standpoint, if he wants us to continue to respond to false alarms or not. So it's kind of a twofold section. Even though the ordinance may disappear, that still is a response, or something that the Sheriff's Office may, as an elected official, may choose to still respond to those calls, or may choose not to respond to those calls. So there's kind of two components to this, as we move forward.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, how do you know it's a false alarm, until you show up?
Because...
Just going to ask that.
You know, I mean, how do you know I'm not having a heart attack, until you hook me up, and I didn't just eat, you know, a bad piece of pizza?
So my apologies. What will happen is typically, we get the alarm service company, who's actually monitoring the alarm.
Right.
Or the responsible that's listed on that, and that's part of this registration, is making sure that there's responsibles, there's those things. So the alarm monitoring company may cancel us before we get there. The homeowner may cancel us and say, hey, I messed with the cleaning lady, you know, whatever the circumstance is in, we, there's probably, and I know we have the numbers, but roughly 300 or 400 that we, we were canceled before we even got on scene, or we were dispatched, or get canceled by dispatch ahead of time, because dispatch will ask some questions, is a responsible, have you reached out to the responsible? So we try to mitigate that before we get dispatched. So often, we'll get canceled before we get going.
But I think, to Commissioner Lucy's point, which, which I, you know, I agree with the chairman on this one, you know, we're getting like 100 and some thousand dollars from, from the, you know, the cost of these, these fees. And if you're responding to, let's just say, you said 300 or 400 you got canceled on, and you had to respond to 1,000, so let's say you had to respond to 600, does that 100 and, let's say, $20,000, does it even come close to, you know, covering that time? Because it doesn't give you another FTE.
So given off our rough calculations, it came out to, we roughly did 45 minutes for a deputy to respond to that alarm call. In just rough calculations, it came out to about $50,000 a year, on these false alarms that we just dealt with. And then obviously, we're making close to, you know, anywhere from 100 and 110, somewhere there. So it does theoretically cover the response time that's using the rate, you know, the deputy rate.
Okay. Well, I'd certainly like to meet with them. And I, you know, I'd like to hear what they, what their, their plan is moving forward. I'm, I'm not convinced, if Douglas County has a full-time person, maybe we can pay Douglas County to do it. At least it keeps us in, in the state of Nevada, which would placate, you know, probably half a dozen of my constituents, who are angry about sending it to... half a dozen of my constituents who are angry about sending it to-
Colorado.
Colorado, right. I was thinking, my sales tax, by the way, the state of Nevada farms that out, and I send my sales tax, I used to, I don't, I don't know anymore, because I have direct deposit now, but it used to go to Phoenix for the state of Nevada.
Yeah. Okay, so direction. Commissioner Hartung, this is one of your items?
Okay, well, let's, you know, let's set up a meeting with them, Mr. Peterson, let's, you know, I'll, and just, if they can be in town, let's say, the, from the eighteenth through the thirtieth of June, then that would be fine with me.
Manager Slaughter.
Mr. Chairman.
I have him signed in.
And I completely support that. If we could have a representative from my office, representative from sheriff's office, Commissioner-
Perfect.
-to meet with them, find out what the issues are, and then we could come back and, with recommendations on moving forward.
Great. So here's what I'll do. I'm going to make the motion today that they're a member of the sheriff's office, member of manager's office, and Commissioner Hartung meet with ATB at the earliest convenience to discuss the issue about what possible directions are going forward for the false alarms ordinance going forward. That is my motion.
Second.
Hold on, hold on.
Can I have Mr. Liparelli there as well?
Yes.
You can have, you can have whoever you want.
deserves to be there.
I'll come if Waste Management comes and we'll combine it.
I think we should hammer it all out one time.
Garbage franchise.
Welcome to the dealings.
And bears.
Okay, so I, I made the motion.
I know we have a second.
Uh, hold on, I think somebody jumped, jumped a gun on me.
No, you didn't.
Yeah, but it's close. Anyways, whoever made the mo, who, who do you have find in to make the motion, Madam Clerk?
It's Blake.
We don't have anything on our screens.
There, it went, somebody was there and then it went away, and then-
Yeah, there's nothing on our, our screens right now.
Reset.
Okay.
Okay.
I made the motion. The second was made by Commissioner Jung. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries for, with four commissioners, Commissioner Herman being absent. Thank you very much, Chief Deputy and Staff, we appreciate your, being here this afternoon and being so patient with us. Under Sheriff, you can go home now. Or back to work, or back to work, you don't have to say. Thank you for all your time, appreciate it. All right, we are on to item, we are on to item twenty-one. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, item twenty-one is, this is for possible action, this is discussion to direct the county manager to utilize two or more hours of staff time by authorizing Commissioner Hartung to work directly with Community Services Department staff to review and propose changes to the Wash County Code, Chapter one-ten of the Development Code. And I know that Mr. Solero is here, and I know Commissioner Hartung has-
I thought it was-
Commissioner Hartung is here.
I thought it was, that was really nice, that was a really nice attempt to sit down. Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before Mr. Solero starts talking, I would like to make a point of saying that I think this is a great idea, but I understand that there are some restrictions where commissioners cannot be in certain meetings because of conflicts. So for instance, if it's a first, if it's a meeting with a developer who's talking about a project that might come before us, I think there's a conflict of interest for a commissioner to set in that. So we have to figure out, make sure that we get through this whole process and figure it out, so that we don't put Commissioner Hartung in a position of having a conflict of interest on the issue, so.
And I, you know, I have a Tennessee degree, and I have a comment to this Commissioner Hartung. My discussion is, is that I believe that there are some, some issues and some challenges that we have with Chapter one-ten in our Development Code, being that they've just haven't been looked at, and staff has been working on that. I know diligently, since we've been involved in this process, I know when, it started back when we started talking about storage containers, and then hoop houses and different things, that there are challenges with one-ten. And I think Commissioner Hartung brings a level of attention to detail when it comes to these types of issues, that he can bring some elevated understanding, and maybe a little bit of a political wherewithal of where, how, how things work within certain districts. My challenge is the same as Commissioner, her, Commissioner or Vice Chair Burke Bigler's, is that I don't want to shorten this ability of this body to be able to be unbiased and take a five-member vote because a commissioner has participated in a discussion that truly is, we've got to maintain the, the very defined lines of a political policy body versus a staff and operation body. There, there's got to be that clear, defined difference. And so as this body has always operated since I've been here, we've always provided direction, some insight, but that's about the extent of it versus true, true involvement in the process and what that should look like. Because none of us on this board are licensed engineers or professionals in this, in this field. However, we do know our, our constituent base and our community well. Those are my challenges with this. So if this was to go forward and we were to pursue this in a planning, or not a planning, so to speak, but more of a, an assessment of that, those ordinances within one-ten, that would work for me, acting as a liaison to the board, but not any true involvement. So to Commissioner, Vice Chair's point, no, no pre-dev meetings, no meetings that have anything with any future appeals, potential, anything like that. It has to be specifically about code, with you, discussing challenges, and it can't be relevant to any project. Immediately, the second becomes relevant to any project current or in the future, he has to be removed from that process, because it just can't, it can't, we can't go down that road. For open meeting law reasons and for a number of purposes, we had a planning commission challenge with that just last year, and I don't want that same issue to come back to this board and be participated in that board. So with that, Commissioner Hartung, you have your sign.
I think it's important to note that I did stay on holiday and expressed that.
Well, there you go.
You're going to do it. Somewhat. Very nice.
But I have no desire, I was in, I was in one pre-development meeting that I was asked by the applicant's representative to, to sit in that meeting. I have, I have no real desire to sit through every single meeting, every single time. That's, that's not the point of this. The point of this is to try to understand sort of what's coming down the pike. As an example, in your district, there is some annexation going on right now via the city of Reno. There's almost eighty acres right off to the north of Rhodes Road. And it's those kinds of changes that we need to look at, and are there ways that we can adjust our direction so that we can make it attractive enough for them to stay in the county and develop in the county rather than moving to the city? And, and I think that's, that's, those are the kinds of things that, that looking at one-ten and where can we be potentially a little more nimble than, than the cities? And, and maybe even, and I've asked this since I arrived, and Commissioner Jung and Burke Bigler, you'll probably remember this, where, how do we streamline our process so that we can be more competitive with Story County? And it's not throwing our process out the window, it is really looking at our process and asking, where can we streamline it? And as both of you will recall, we, we went from a single map to a two-map system so that, and, and that, and I was at a different, I was on the planning commission at that time, that's, that was a great move. That was, that's a, that's one of those things that streamlined the process so that everything didn't have to be a master plan amendment. And, and so, and I think that there are other things that we can look at in one-ten that could potentially streamline our process. I can give staff some feedback, we can meet, say, once a month, I don't want to meet every week, I want to meet, you know, once a month, try to sort of figure out what's coming, the things that we need to keep our eye on, things that could be a little more contentious than others. And, and I think it'll allow us also the ability to maybe guide the process. I don't want to guide the process in districts one, two, three, and five so much as make, make staff aware of some of the pitfalls that we may encounter to, to make things a little easier. And how can we move applicants through our process so that we don't have to constantly change the whole system to accommodate a single applicant? If you have to change the system, then you change the system, but sometimes it's just a matter of changing a specific direction and a parcel so that you can still get done what you want to get done, but you don't have to, have to affect the whole entire county with it.
Yeah. Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Don't we have Moira, who, that's one of the things that she really focuses on is handholding the, the applicants through the whole system in it? Handholding is, you know, she's not actually doing that, we understand that, she doesn't have time to do that. But, but helping the applicants through the system so that we make sure that we are functioning in a timely manner. I think what I would like to see for this is, I would like to, because you do know planning so well, Commissioner Hartung, and I would like to see you look at Code one-ten and see where we need to make changes as we're looking at the, the new master plan that we're going to be working on with the governing board. And since you sit on the governing board, I, I think that, that is a, an area that you really can go in and say, wait a minute, we are making these changes and you need to make these changes or whatever. That's kind of what I would like to see you do with this.
So, hold on, hold on. Manager, Liparelli.
I'm here. Getting pulled over.
She's going to, she's going to be put underneath the table in a second.
Rather.
Beginning with the Magna Carta in ancient Britain.
These kids will never go on government, ever.
It is a problem if a commissioner gets involved in matters that the board may hear in its quasi-judicial function.
Exactly.
Appeals, approvals of, of applications for permits and those kinds of things. Legislative matters are different. They're not subject to the same kinds of restrictions. So any commissioner can talk to any person in the community about legislative issues, and in that role, the, the commissioners, just like a state legislator, can go out and, and gather information to make a policy decision. So as long as we stay on the legislative side of the line, the changes to Chapter one-ten that involve county policy issues, legislative issues, not a problem. It would, in the middle, there's this different animal where a person asks for a code amendment. We had one today, the master plan deal. That is on the wrong side. So we couldn't, we couldn't have individual commissioners getting involved in, in pre-meetings about code amendments that were sought by individuals. But policy questions, revising the code to make it more efficient, all those kinds of things, any commissioner can do that without prejudicing that commissioner's ability to, to vote later.
Thank you, O wise district attorney. Mr. Solero, I'd like to hear your understanding of what, how you feel this role would play within your department, because this will impact your department.
For the record, Dave Solero, Director of Community Services Department. So I have had conversations with Commissioner Hartung related to some of these items. And one of the things, when we did bring on our business facilitator, we went out and reached out to the development community as well as the builders and, you know, individuals, and started talking with them about our codes and how the process works, because your direction to us was to streamline the process and make things flow and really work with, you know, kind of getting the development started and, you know, economic smart choices. One of the things we, we found is, from a staff level, our code actually is fairly rigid. I mean, there are rules and reasons that, that the policies have been put in place that, that require staff to make certain decisions based on what we can and cannot do. I mean, staff has done a great job of trying to come up with all of the different options about how to move things through a process to help enable smart growth within our, with our, in our community. However, we found that there are instances where we just can't get there. And so we get these contentious items that come before the board, and, you know, they go to the planning commission, they come to the board on appeal, because at some point, you know, someone decides they're, they're not right for them. So I think the, the discussion that Commissioner Hartung and I had was to help, help go through the code and review and understand where we want to be going and how to build enough flexibility in that we can get there from a policy level standpoint, not project by project, but policy level. So is it, you know, the zero scape is an example that has come up before, and we've got some provisions within our code, but is there something we can do to enhance the zero scape ability within our landscaping standards that are, that are within the code? I think that's something that's very appropriate and we can get there. But that one change may have ramifications if we allow zero scaping, you know, to be a, a portion of this. That might reach into parts of our master plan when we're talking about utilities and those sorts of things. So I think the, you know, Commissioner Hartung has got the background to understand kind of how all of these overarching, you know, the, the area plans work with the master plan, works with the regional plan and all those other sorts of things. I think it will help guide us through a policy level discussion through these things. Now, to the district attorney and Commissioner Burke Bigler's guidance, you know, we're going to have to be very strict as staff to set up the lanes in how this works and what, what projects we bring forward to discuss with the commissioner and those we don't. Another discussion that we've had with Commissioner Hartung is just the understanding of what projects are being submitted. So I've actually asked staff to prepare a little, a little dashboard for me, that'll be coming out to all of you, once we get those that come in, so you can see what district they're in, what they are, what they entail, and where they're headed. So I think that'll help all of you kind of understand what projects are coming into the, into the, to the governing body. So I think, you know, between those two things, Commissioner Hartung assisting with the, the policy discussion and, and staff's understanding that you need to understand what is happening throughout the county, to include some of the things that we get from the city of Reno, we review some of those, those projects as well. That information coming back to you, the board, will help you make your decisions moving forward.
Great. Commissioner Hartung?
Yeah, just the, the, and I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Solero. That was going to be one of the first questions that, that I was going to ask staff to, to, or the tasks to ask staff to produce, is a dashboard so that we can look out potentially, you know, six months that, that, or, or more, when we have a tentative map that's coming forward and we kind of know that these things, when the applications are made, that you know that this stuff is coming forward, because it, it'll help us as commissioners to prep for those kinds of requests. Some are pedestrian in nature, they're no big deal, others can be very, very contentious. And Commissioner Lucy, you've got some in your district. I've got some in mine. You know, Commissioner Burke Bigler sees a lot of stuff up at Lake Tahoe that is, boy, that's a, that's an animal all unto itself, it's its own bear.
Okay.
And, and so, so the, the point here more than anything is, is that I have no desire to get in the day-to-day workings, I do not want to be down here on a daily basis, or even a weekly basis. It's, it's really more of this long-range kind of a, an understanding and, and helping staff to understand where the board potentially would like to be and, and will, you know, once every month or two months, whenever we decide, I want direction from the board as to, you know, maybe some of the, the things that we're looking at, you know, one of the, one of the potentials that we talked about was how do we streamline for a known developer, somebody who builds a quality product and they, and they really have very few red lines, and how do we, how do we get them to a point where they don't have to continually come in phase after phase after phase after phase and continue to ask for the same things, it's just a cookie cutter, they're just asking for another one and it gets, and it gets hung up in our process because of the way it's set up. And there's just no need for that, there really isn't any need, so.
Yeah, so I, I agree, and I think, I just wanted to make sure that we were very clear on the record, that as the DA pointed out, that there is a difference between the quasi-judicial versus the legislative role in this. So I think we all feel comfortable with that now, and I think through your process and what you have brought forward today, we all, we are all on the same page and we all understand now kind of the intent of this, so that there is no discretion, I mean, so discrepancies as we move down through the process. So looking for a motion to approve, so I have a motion, Commissioner Jung.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. I'll call for the vote.
I withdrew my second, so Commissioner Burke Bigler can put her two.
We're good, I think we're good. Second or none?
We're ready.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We don't have a second, or do we?
We don't have a, it says second or none.
We, we don't have it within the system, but we know-
We don't have it within the system, but we know who the second was.
You got it.
So, rather than hold it up this time, we're trying to get you to the vote.
Great, gotcha, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Commissioner Jung. Thank you.
She was waiting for your vote.
Oh, sorry.
What? Please affirm your vote and let the record show that Commissioner Herman is absent. All right, we are on to a legislative.
Mr. Chair, we would need to go to item 25, which is a public hearing item.
That's correct. Item 25, public hearing.
This is a public hearing item, item 25. This is for possible action to approve an outdoor festival business license application pursuant to Washoe County Code, Chapter 25, and related provisions and associated license conditions submitted by Bryce Leon on behalf of the Reno Tahoe Open Foundation for the Barracuda Championship 2017 Golf Tournament scheduled to be held July 31st through August 6th, 2017 at Montreux Golf and Country Club.
Second.
Need open the public hearing, sir.
Have nobody signed in for the public hearing? Don't need a, we don't need a presentation, there is no public, there are no public. I have a motion and a second, call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. With Commissioner Herman being absent, please affirm your vote. Votes are affirmed. We are on now, Mr. Manager, to 22.
Item 22 is discussion, direction of staff regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed by legislators by Washoe County Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District or by both entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to submit bill draft requests or such legislative issues as may be deemed by the chair or the board to be of critical significance to Washoe County and the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District.
Mr. Rogers.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. For the record, Al Rogers, Office of the County Manager. As typical, we have provided you a weekly report of bills of interest for Week 15. As noted, we are winding down and can see the end of the tunnel. What I provided to you today is the standard format with our updated bills of interest. I would tell you that there are no movement on any of the first page in terms of support. Those also on the second page, AB 97, was heard last night. We will remain neutral on that because the fiscal note does remain with that, as pointed, I think, earlier in terms of potential legislative impacts that are still looming out there. This is certainly one of those. And then, we still stay in the opposition to those noted at the bottom of the page and also on Page 3. On Page 3, I did highlight, not for any purposes other than to reflect back to the summary on the back, that identified 16 bills that we were watching, did not make it through the committee deadline of last Friday. This one, AB 120, I believe we talked about last week, it did not make it through committee. So, that is one that is on the sidelines. And then, we do have our list of watch, as typical. I would note that Friday again is another deadline that needs to come out of the floor by Friday, so that will set us up for the final week going in. With that, I am happy to answer any questions or seek any direction from the board. We do not have any bills to take a position on today. Again, a lot of discussion in committees and things are on the floor, but we won't know until the dust settles after Friday night.
And, Mr. Rogers, I need a copy of that for the record, please.
We'll get that for you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Jung.
Yes, I'd like to impress upon this commission that we no longer remain neutral in AB 379, which is the Park Natural Resource and Recreation Special District Legislation, which allows a tool in the toolbox that you may enact, a special GID that just deals with parks and recreation. And this would, I mean, hopefully, I think the big dream is that we get Reno Parks and Washoe County all on board to do like a linear river project that would be funded by these general improvement districts. And the general improvement districts also would only be enacted if people voted 50-plus-one, 50% plus-one to enact, to tax themselves. So, all it is is something that we would be able to have, that the legislature's trying to give us, and so, I think I'd rather have more tools rather than less tools. It doesn't mean we do anything for 20 years or the public comes out and says, I want to be, I want a general improvement district, I've walked door-to-door to my neighborhood, this is the boundary and I know I can get the votes. So, I really think, and my Regional Parks and Open Space Commission totally endorses this as well, our Regional Parks and Open Space Commission.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing is, I want to make sure that there are some problems in this bill, in the language of this bill, because I've worked with Jamie on it, and some concerns that the county has had specifically about how things are worded. So, I want to make sure that Jamie and our legislative team are comfortable that there's not problems in there before we.
Jamie has problems with the language, she should come speak to me about that and also to our Chair of the Regional Parks and Open Space, who is instrumental in getting this together, because everybody else is on board. And, you know, here's another thing, I just want to say to you guys, new people are coming into town and this is going to be either, it's going to be a game changer, we're either going to get on the bus or we're going to be left behind. And what I mean by new people, new voters, people with different expectations of how government works, what parks look like. And the other thing, we say that our number-one priority is economic development, the number-one thing employers look at, I wouldn't say the number-one, but a very important part of what an employer looks like when they're moving, is that their employees will like to live where it's at, and parks drive that quality of life.
Mr. Rogers, is this, currently as drafted, is this enabling legislation?
Yes.
It is, it is enabling legislation.
You don't have to do it.
And, Mr. Chair, to the point, and I'm sure the county manager can add on to this if necessary, but to Commissioner Burke Bigler's point, we have had concerns. Again, nothing that is outstanding, but I think through the iterations of this bill, there have been issues regarding the property tax in terms of governance, some other issues that we don't necessarily oppose, but until we see language that I think we're comfortable with has been our position up until this point.
Manager Slaughter.
I was just going to, Mr. Rogers really covered, I was going to say, we've worked extensively with the sponsors of the bill. I believe so, if we could, I believe we're there to have, the issues that had been identified by staff, I believe have all been worked out and are represented in the current version of this bill. So, certainly, you know, from our standpoint, staff standpoint, we're comfortable now and would leave it to the board if it's something you want to move from watch, neutral to support.
Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand that there was some language that left the impression that if one of the cities set up a GID or if the county set up a GID or if, because this applies to everybody, it isn't just to Washoe County, it's not directed just at Washoe County, applies to the whole state. So, if Story County set up a GID that was for park purposes and it abutted to another political entity's land, that they could tax the residents because it benefited them. So...
District Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, to Commissioner Burke Bigler's point, on that specific section, I did provide input to Ms. Rodriguez, and she was in communication with Assemblywoman Joiner, and we articulated that concern about attempting to impose taxes outside the boundary of the district. And they presented us with a revised bill showing that language had been changed to make it clear the tax can be imposed only within the boundaries of the district, whatever those are. And as Commissioner Jung points out, there's sort of an organic nature to this bill, so people in any part of the county, doesn't have to be a recognized district of any other kind, can form a parks district like this, who becomes a local government competitor for property tax cap and debt and everything else. It creates a little mini-government, just like a GID, and they can draw the boundaries wherever the people agree they ought to be. So, if you think that's good policy, it's a bill to support. If not, then don't, but Mr. Rogers is correct, we have provided numerous input, language input.
Okay, so I have some further questions. I have some further questions about this. If the GID is sought after with inside of an entity such as Washoe County, City of Reno, wherever it may be, is the governor, I mean, the governing body that oversees that boundary, I mean, would it be the commission that would ultimately approve the allowance of that GID within the county, for example, if it were an incorporated area? Would it be the commission that would oversee the creation of that GID and accept that application from said involved citizens and help draft that? Liparelli.
If the proposed parks district is completely within a city, then the city board or council decides whether to create it or not, and then, after it's created, there's a process for a governing board of its own to evolve. If it's across city and county boundaries, then you have a combination of approvals that are necessary to create the district. So, it depends on where the lines are, what jurisdictions are involved and who approves it.
Okay.
But the bill sponsor did add language to protect against concerns that people have that this could happen, you know, with a few citizens pushing it. The new version of the bill says the presentation of a petition by a group of property owners does not obligate a elected governing board to create the district. So, if you got a petition from folks in the county who wanted to do this, they brought it here, you could decline it, and so could a city council. So, as Commissioner Jung said in the beginning, it only enables...
It's an enabling legislation, it would still take the decision and action of the governing board within that where that GID would be to enact that general improvement district.
Yeah, and it's technically not a GID, it's a new chapter of the law. It's a law like a GID, but it's a parks district.
Okay. And then, Manager Slaughter, a question for you in regards to, with this increase, I mean, the fiscal note, with this increase, depending on how many parks districts that were enacted, what would be the fiscal impact to the county in regards to management and oversight of those said parks districts? Or, Mr. Rogers?
Maybe I can take a shot at this. Mr. Chair, as part of this process, as explained by Mr. Liparelli, once the governing body were to authorize a GID, then there would be a governance structure put into place that would oversee that. And one of the key components after that would be, and I'm lacking the term right now, but an action plan, what that intent of that GID is to do. Again, they have various powers, including acquisition, operation, very similar to a park district, but I think in that action plan, it would be determined, and we can't determine that right now, what that fiscal impact could or would be to county government or any local government.
Okay. Commissioner Jung.
You could argue it would actually be a net bonus for us because we could focus on our mandated services and let another commission that has convinced, or GID that's convinced their 50% plus-one of whomever they regionally put together to pay another tax, and they have a dedicated fund, and we could get out of that business, that we clearly are, not because we don't have good employees or good staff, but, you know, I mean, let's just look at Mayberry Park, just this weekend, there had to be 100 people there. And it's not in great shape, and there are no restrooms, there's porta-potties, it's disgusting considering what a most beautiful place we have here, no bathrooms, no drinking fountains. The burn area at Rancho San Rafael has never been replaced, it's all invasive weeds there. So, we are so resource-constrained, we cut the heck out of parks and rec. This is a reaction that people felt across the country and across our state and across our region, that citizen activists went and said, listen, we think we could do this on our own, do better and take that burden off you and collect our own form of taxes there. So, I don't understand why we'd have ever even been neutral. This should have been support, 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 especially the embarrassing amount of cuts we did to parks and rec and libraries.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. You know, with, you know, with the information that's being presented to us today, as long as it's maintained, and I agree, I think that the one thing that we did receive out of our community survey was the increase to parks and quality of life. So, I don't disagree with Commissioner Jung, that that is something that we need to bring forward and continue to support. I just want to make sure that the impacts aren't, the unrealized impacts aren't going to be so tremendous on the counties, just because, yes, in theory, it's a great idea. Yes, in theory, we want to move forward and the intent is in the right place, but sometimes good-intended propositions can probably lead to some devastat, I mean, sometimes. So, you're going to, I'm going to put you in timeout today. Vice Chair.
I promise I didn't give her wine for lunch.
I know, what's going on down there?
Mr.?
It's all yours, floor is yours.
Well, in light of the fact that both Mr. Liparelli and Mr. Slaughter are comfortable and Mr. Rogers is comfortable that the language, our staff are satisfied with the concerns they had in the bill, the language has changed, I would make a motion that we move this from watch to support.
I would be...
It's AB 379.
Correct, AB 370.
Oh.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, a call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Herman being absent. Anything further, Mr. Rogers, on your report?
I guess just in my closing comments, just to note that this will be the final report that we'll give to the board before the end of the legislature. So, certainly, as Mr. Slaughter knows, it'll move very quickly in the next few days, not that it hasn't already. Certainly, if you have questions, concerns through the county manager, myself, and even to Jamie Rodriguez, I encourage you to stay in touch, so.
Well, yeah, and I, you know, what I would ask, I know we won't have a legislative report on the current, but what I would like post-session is a final report of bills that did pass and what that, what those impacts will be, and, you know, I know a number of challenges that we saw today. I mean, we saw, you know, the governor signed into action the assisted suicide bill and some of those impacts and different things like that, that will be challenging for the county going forward and what that looks like, so. But, big round of applause, good job.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for, thank you for your continued service and obviously to our staff down in Carson, so thank you for that. All right, seeing no further issue on there, we will go to, Mr. Manager, our final public comment of the day.
This is our final public comment of the day, item 28.
I don't see anybody signed in for, oh, oh, I lie, Ms. Kathy Brandhorst. And she's not here, so well, I will, we will move along with that. All right, we are on to 29. Commissioners and managers announcements, anything that any commissioner would like to speak? Commissioner Jung.
Hi, I just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to have a list from our property management staff of all the available parcels that Washoe County owns, all the available buildings that we maybe have vacant or available for, not necessarily economic developments, don't get crazy on me, but maybe even for some nonprofits as well that need land and also looking at affordable housing and those sort of things. So, I haven't seen one of those in years, so it'd be nice if we could all get a copy of that, a hard copy, please. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other speakers. Oh, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, I would, and I apologize to the two that I'm going to speak of, that I didn't say this earlier, but on Thursday, tomorrow, I'll be attending the Nevada Women's Fund Women of Achievement banquet, and we have two recipients in Washoe County of our staff who are being honored, Susan Halhan with the District Attorney's Office and Patricia Knight from our Human Resources Department will be honored tomorrow as women of achievement. So, I'd be honored to be attending that event.
Awesome.
It's tomorrow.
No, it's Thursday. Tomorrow's Wednesday. I will be at the luncheon also.
Weren't you not a recipient yourself?
I was.
Our famed Chair, Vice Chair Burke Bigler was a recipient of that wonderful prestigious award, so that is fantastic. Very, very high accolades for both of those women. One other thing I want to bring up too, for further discussion, off of the toe of what Commissioner Jung said, there was an ask from the City of Reno for those parking spots in the downtown, on our downtown parking garage off of Center Street. From the City of Reno, from, yeah, Assistant City Manager... From the City of Reno, from, yeah, from Assistant City Manager, Mr. Thomas. Have you followed up with that?
I can't answer.
Not sure, but I mean, I don't know, I don't know. I think he was looking for, I don't know what the intent was for this basis.
I will follow up with the city manager on that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, seeing no other comments, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.